All right, welcome to the Village of Cottage Grove Special Village Board of Trustees Meeting on Monday, June 23, 2025. This is a hybrid meeting occurring both at Village Hall in person and then on Zoom. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. It is 5:30, so I'll call the meeting to order. There is a quorum and the agenda was properly posted, so we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is the Public Appearances Section, the public's opportunity to speak. We welcome your input and appreciate your community engagement. This is the only opportunity to share your comments, questions, or concerns with the board, and it's not a forum for dialogue or debate. All comments will be noted, and where appropriate, we can follow up either staff or myself at a later time. So please state your name, your address, and then each speaker is allotted up to three minutes to give their comments, and we ask that everyone be respectful. We will begin with individuals who have submitted a wish-to-speak form ahead of time and are present at tonight's meeting. We will, after those have been heard, move to other individuals in the audience and then to anyone that's on Zoom. So I have a pile here, and I'll just start at the top. Anthony. Just push the little guy that's got the speaker coming up. There you go.
Evening, I'm Anthony Karatko. My address is 829 Hawthorne Drive in the city of Sun Prairie. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the PD Project. I've been employed with the Village Cottage Grove Police Department for 20 years. I've also lived in the village for 28 years. During this time, I've watched the village grow from approximately 2,000 residents in 1994 to nearly 10,000 today, or currently. I've also watched the police department grow from 10 sworn staff in 2006 to 20, I'm sorry, 10,000 sworn staff in 2006 with two support to 21 sworn staff currently with two support. Along our way, the jurisdictional boundaries have grown, and the agency has moved four times. Since I've been here, the agency has moved from this current facility, Village Hall in 1994, from here it moved to the town hall basement, and then to the emergency services basement, and then to the PD that's on County Highway N and Nora Road, and then to our current facility, which is now at Progress Drive. With each of these moves, I'm sure each of these were done for more than one reason. Most likely, one of those reasons was due to growth. While the police department has been at its current location for 10 years, in that time, we have grown from nine sworn in 2015 to 21 sworn today. Although the current facility has served its purpose for the expected 10 years, it's time has since, it's time again to move along and move forward. To me, it's clear that we have quite simply outgrown the current facility due to staff doubling in size and the need for more space for equipment, vehicles, and technology. It is also clear to me that the Cottage Grove Police Department and other village staff members have put in the long hours and diligent time, to diligently come up with plans and a proposal for a facility that will fit the needs for many years to come. So I have, thank you for hearing me out.
Sarah.
Hello, everyone. Good to be on this side. I'm Sarah Valencia, 213 Wieldbridge, here in Cottage Grove. So I'm surprised and disappointed to see such pushback on the police station. This project has been studied and in development for several years and has been supported and prioritized by a variety of board compositions over those years. I understand some of you are new to the board or haven't been on for a number of years, and so it might seem like a new project to you. As a village board trustee for the last six years, I can assure you that we did our due diligence in making the decision to build the police station next to the MSB. For reading the memos and listening to comments, it seems that there might be the belief that passports didn't do brainstorming or planning, but we did. We paid for multiple studies, we toured all of the village facilities with architects and other experts. The experts told us the police station's the most critical facility to invest in. We didn't pretend to be architects, or police base needs experts. We listened to what the experts told us, we compared it to what we could afford, we then had to ask the experts to reduce the scope, and if we could still have a well-functioning police station, of which they did, and that is the plan that is before you. It is literally yours in the making. To remind folks, the current police station was previously used as a commercial cleaning facility. We moved in in 2015 quickly. It was retrofitted to fit our brand-new force. We knew at the time it would last us a maximum of 10 years. Just to do the quick math, 2015 to now is 10 years. So we're at the time that we need to have a new building. You will see on page 36 of the 2021 Facility Study Report details all of the current conditions that we have our police officers working in. In fact, we can't even detail all of them in writing because it would put our officer's safety at risk. In recent years, Cottage Grove has ranked among the safest in the state. We should be proud of that, and there shouldn't be any hesitation in investing in the police department that has helped us achieve that accomplishment. It shouldn't be controversial. We simply cannot delay this project. This is a well-thought-out plan. It has been in our financial management plan for multiple years. We've already invested over $1 million, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. For those of you that ran for office claiming that you support public safety or fiscal responsibility, the only vote that supports those claims is a vote to move forward with the current police station project without hesitation. A quote from Arnold Glassow states that one of the tests of leadership is the ability to recognize a problem before it becomes an emergency. The recent past village boards, we identified the problem. The solution is before you, as the current board, to implement that solution before it becomes an emergency, and I ask you, please, don't send us on a backward track. Thank you.
Brian? Brian Carter.
I'm Brian Carter. I live at 442 Badger Drive, Evansville, Wisconsin. Good evening, I am Detective Brian Carter. I've been working for the Cottage Grove Police Department for 14 years, and I've been working full-time in law enforcement since 2002. Law enforcement is a calling, something many are not called to do. It takes a special type of person who is willing to set aside their own needs and the needs of their family for the greater good of the community. It is vital we attract and retain those extraordinary people who are willing, who are truly committed to serving others with a high-level professionalism, compassion, and commitment. As mentioned, I've been employed by the Cottage Grove Police Department for 14 years. I've served in many roles during that time. When I began working for the Cottage Grove Police Department, we served as a village and town of Cottage Grove Police Department. With that came significant challenges because of the wishes of the village and townships were consistently in conflict with one another. As a result, the citizens of the town of Cottage Grove and the village of Cottage Grove were frequently underserved because we were not afforded the appropriate resources and staffing to serve our community and its citizens in the way they deserved to be served. The consistent approach was try to put off the needs of today, ignore them, and act like they didn't exist. As you would expect, that didn't work, ultimately leading to us becoming a village-only department. I can recall working shifts where I was the only person on duty, having to field numerous emergency calls coming in at the same time. Unfortunately, quality of service fell because of the lack of commitment to providing the police department with the necessary resources to effectively serve the citizens whom we are honored to serve. We have worked hard to progress as an agency. We strive to provide the highest level of service at a time when everyone, including law enforcement, are struggling to find, recruit, retain, and retain the best and the brightest. We need to do our part to attract and retain these great people while ensuring we have the resources to effectively serve the citizens of Cottage Grove in a timely, professional, and efficient manner. The need for this facility is clear. That need will not go away if we fail to move forward with this project in a timely manner. Failing to do so in a timely manner will only skyrocket the costs and will make it very difficult to effectively address our other future community needs. For the sake of the community, I am asking you to vote in favor of this project. Thank you for your time.
Jessica.
My name is Jessica Frutiger. I'll just use the PD address as my address, 210 Progress Drive. I proudly serve as a sergeant for the Cottage Grove Police Department. I've dedicated the past 20 years of my life to this department and community. Throughout my career, I have witnessed and been a part of the department's evolution. I began my service when we operated as a joint police department with the town of Cottage Grove, working out of the basement of what is now the emergency services building. We later relocated to what is now the town of Cottage Grove Police Department. While the joint department had its benefits, it also came with significant challenges. Balancing the needs of both the village and township proved difficult. Often, only one officer was on duty at a time, and unequal cost-sharing added tension and created difficult financial decisions. There were times when officers took unpaid days and endured wage freezes, sacrifices made in order to continue delivering essential public safety services. Despite those hardships, our commitment to serving and protecting the community never wavered. In 2015, we became the Village of Cottage Grove Police Department and moved into our current facility. We have grown into a stronger and better-equipped department. I'm proud of the progress we've made and the professional, dedicated team we have today. Our officers are deeply invested in keeping Cottage Grove safe and thriving. As our community continues to grow, so do its needs. The current police facility has served us well over the past 10 years. However, it is outdated and no longer meets the demands of modern law enforcement or the expectations of a growing community. A new building is not a luxury, it is a necessary and critical investment in our future. I fully support the proposed police department project. It represents an investment not only in our officers, but in the long-term safety, stability, and well-being of Cottage Grove. Thank you.
JP.
Good evening. JP V. Vicencio, 702 Wieldbridge Road, here in Cottage Grove. I'm here to say, speak on behalf, and hope for, that you all would support this project. First off, I want to say that I disagree with Trustee Benzo in that we should not defund the police and fire the over 20 employees that we currently have as part of our department. Many in our community have appreciated the level of service our police department has provided. Police are first responders in the truest sense, including medical incidents, and are usually the first unseen due to how they're constantly patrolling. In many ways, this can be the difference between life and death, especially in cases such as a heart attack, where they have defibrillators in their squad cars and those minutes literally will save lives. Shifting to Dane County sheriffs will cut down on the service level, and those officers can get pulled in other directions, and then we lose our local support, including having our school resource officer being local and that knows our kids. Regarding the project, I believe that we should really move forward with its current design. We have already spent over $1 million on this project, and any drastic changes would mean all that money was spent for nothing. Many of you claim to be fiscal responsible, but it seems like you're only looking at the short term. We cannot delay this project any longer. It is time to the closing of our TID district so that it wouldn't have any impact on taxes. What would you tell residents when they see their taxes go down 300, but then go up 300 the following year if you delay this project? This project started way back when the police department was first formed and started in the MSB. We knew it had a 10- to 15-year shelf life. The current study and design, remember, started back at the end of 2022, and shifted from a municipal service campus to just where we are now with the police department due to the costs and what this village could afford. We are at the final stages of the design and approval process, and this project was approved by a village board and put in the budget in the past year. Remember that the police department building has vastly different requirements due to safety and security reasons, and it's not like a typical new build. Cameron mentioned a couple meetings ago that if we delay this, it will impact other village departments and will cause them to have to rent additional space. I'm not sure about you, but I would prefer that the village does not have to incur additional costs of renting spaces just to provide our current level of services. This project allows us to add on to the building or build a separate building right next door. As you all probably know, the longer we wait, the more expensive this project will become. The best time to do any new building is yesterday, which is why I am fully in favor of this project moving forward as is. Thank you.
Brian Johnson.
Good evening. My name's Brian Johnson. I will also be using the Cottage Grove Police Department's address, 210 Progress Drive, Suite 1. Good evening. My name's Brian Johnson, and I've been employed with the Village Cottage Grove Police Department since March, since March of 2024. I am representing the Cottage Grove Police Officer Association. I first want to inform you all that any member of the association is off-duty and on their own time. In law enforcement, whether it's on a traffic stop or being in contact with citizens, safety is always the officer's top priority. The current Cottage Grove Police Department's goal is to provide a comfortable place for any citizen to walk in and speak with an officer. The current police department is not an ideal environment for subjects, victims, witnesses, and officers. The current conditions have constraints and hazardous conditions that have and will continue unless addressed. The hallway that connects to the Sally Port is a narrow hallway where officers also utilize our evidence processing area. Officers can be dealing with putting weapons, contraband, and safekeeping items into storage while another officer is walking in a potential subject or victim of a crime. Accessible weapons, contraband, and other dangerous items should not be near subjects under any circumstances. This hallway also has immediate unsecured access to the patrol officer squad room and the men and women's locker room. When suspects are performing standardized field sobriety testing in the hallway, they're out of handcuffs as they need their arms to be free to stand in instructionary stances and using arms for balance is one of the clues officers look for when investigating operating while under the influence of fences. Properly-equipped law enforcement facilities have rooms that separate evidence processing from subjects. The current Cottage Grove Police Department has a narrow 20-foot hallway. This is a safety concern for officers that have their back turned while processing evidence. Subjects performing testing can easily run into the unsecured squad room, offices, locker rooms, and grab pens, scissors, and other miscellaneous items to potentially cause harm to officers or themselves. This is a safety concern for all. Subjects are also in close proximity to our clerical staff and chaplains who are unarmed and unprotected. It is our job to protect and serve those who need it. Why not them? Why not us? The garage is shared between the police department and the Department of Public Works. Each entity in its own has their respective needs. These needs do not always match. On days when the weather is cooperative to have fresh air flowing in the garage, the garage doors are left open for airflow while the Department of Public Works works in the garage, conducting tasks such as welding, utilizing grinders, and painting for proper airflow. This meets their needs and is respected. This does not match the needs of law enforcement, however. This gives the public access to the garage and only a window break away from accessing rifles and tools law enforcement personnel have in squad cars to perform our expected duties. I fully support the proposed police department project that was presented by Chief Gary and the architect in the past. With this project, interviews will not be heard through paper-thin walls. Officers can have a secure area for evidence processing, and subjects can be contained and not have access to squad rooms and locker rooms. How can officers keep the community safe if we're not safe ourselves? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Jordan.
Hello, I'm Officer Jordan Schultz, 5121 East Shore Parkway, City of Pittsburgh. I've served with the Village of Cottage Grove Police Department for just shy of two years now. I come here today, again, not paid, I wasn't told to be here. I'm here for my concern of this new police department project, and that concern extends to the community and the community members of the Village of Cottage Grove. That is, while working out of our current police department, I give the citizens of the Village of Cottage Grove my best services, as well as to all members of the police department, but it is time for a new police department, and woefully so. A new police department will augment the services that we currently provide. I won't speak too much on the new department. I'll speak on the current department that we have because that's what I spend day in and day, day out of, more like night in and night out, as you can see by the bags under my eyes. The current police department was not designed to be a police department, and it's very evident when you go inside of it. As Officer Johnson had spoke on, our intake area, evidence collection, locker room space, and squad room is all in one narrow hallway. He's talked about the safety part, I'll talk about the size part. We're currently out-of-room. Our locker rooms, we're having to kick people out of locker rooms because we're running out of lockers. We have filing cabinets for officers, paperwork, and sensitive information that's in the hallway that we take people into to process. As far as workspaces, we don't have enough workspaces for conducting investigations for oncoming and outgoing shifts, and that impedes the services that we provide to the Gear that we have is stuffed into people's offices because we don't have enough gear storage. Again, these are things that can be accessed by people we're taking into the police department because we don't have proper, secure facilities. Radio reception is give-and-take depending on what side of the building that we're on. I could be in the garage and not necessarily be able to hear my radio, which is essential when I need to respond to calls that people of the community are requesting of us, and that can hamper our response times. Sharing a garage with the public works, while I love our members of the public works, it's not feasible to have to secure our squad cars in our own PD because there's easy access and we don't know who's coming in and out of those garages. And again, locking those squad cars and having to unlock them every time, that hampers response time. I think we need to move forward with this new PD to, again, augment the services that we currently provide. It'll improve and encourage new officers to come work for the Village of Cottage Grove. And I understand that the current public works and parks department, they need more space. I've worked with the public works through Oregon and Pittsburgh, so I know firsthand what's required for a proper public works to function, and the space that they have right now is not sufficient, and I've heard the complaints of that. So this isn't just for us, this is for other departments as well. I think the time is now to move forward. We've already spent all this time and effort on a new police department, and we want to be ready for when the increased population will eventually come. That means calls for service will come, and we don't want to be going through growing pains of a new police department as we're going through these increased population volumes. We want to be prepared now. Thank you all.
Lorraine.
Good evening. Lorraine Gage, 501 Progress Drive. It's great to see you on this side. I want to express my strong support for the development of the new Cottage Grove Police Department. As our community continues to grow with Amazon, and we're talking about having new housing, both multifamily and single-family homes, so does the demand of our critical services, especially public safety. It's essential that we invest in the infrastructure needed to support our officers and ensure the safety and well-being of all residents. This project was thoroughly vetted by previous village board members, including myself, along with village staff, and the planning has been thoughtful and based on clearly identified needs, not rush or reactive. If we continue to delay, construction and labor costs will only rise and make this project even more expensive in the future. So moving forward now is not only the responsible thing to do, but the fiscally responsible thing to do. Supporting this project is about maintaining the safety, trust, and future stability of our community. This is an investment in both our present needs and our long-term success. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, I will mention, because there isn't a correspondence section on the agenda tonight, that we did receive several emails, the village board did, in support of the current proposal for the police station. So we'll move on to new business, discussing, consider the police station project and various alternative proposals. I want to just start by saying kind of how we got to a special meeting. So a couple of village board meetings ago, we had a pretty extensive presentation about the history of Cottage Grove in general and the development and the investment or lack thereof investment in facilities. We talked about the financials, we talked about the current proposed police station, and the village board had kind of the idea to come, make sure that we were doing our due diligence, is how I would put it, and that we are making sure that this is the largest investment that we as a board are making, that Cottage Grove has seen, and moving this forward, I think just making sure we're, you know, crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and moving forward in the right direction. So we, you know, Trustee Severson had the idea to call a special meeting tonight. We asked that all trustees submit a proposal, ideas, or their thoughts, which is what is linked in the agenda as several PDFs. What you'll see first in the agenda is my suggestion for how we run this meeting. Being it somewhat of a workshop and that there's so many ideas and so many thoughts kind of going around, that I think that we, in order to be efficient, we can use my memo as just some kind of guiding principles moving forward for tonight's discussion. I think that establishing the purpose and objectives is a really good place to start and make sure that we're all on the same page before we kind of dive in and present all of our memos. I think, again, our purpose tonight is to make sure that we've exhausted all options and we've discussed all of the ideas that we have, and ultimately, there is a critical need that is out there. We need to address that in some capacity, and so we need to come, as a resolution, this board needs to come up with that solution, and however that looks. I think that we need to stay within the scope of space and facility solutions and try and kind of, I know, I have a bad habit of going off-track a lot of the time, so I just want to make sure that we're kind of all aligned with that is the purpose of tonight. I don't know if anyone has any suggestions on purpose, if we're all in agreement, this is why we're here tonight. If we're all in agreement, this is why we're here tonight. My, I think the objectives for tonight then, too. I would ask that each trustee kind of go to the front. I think staff can pull up each memo, that they, we present our memos and our ideas. We use, we have Mike from the architectural firm here to answer questions. Chief is here, the rest of the staff can provide kind of high-level advice or feedback. We didn't ask them to provide, there obviously is not enough time to vet every single option in detail. So making sure that we give them the opportunity to give their feedback, and then as a board, we can address each other and ask clarifying questions or give our overarching thoughts on each idea and each memo. I know that some of them are more extensive than others. Are we all kind of in agreement, and that's how we could? I think ultimately, there has to be movement forward after the presentation tonight, so we need to determine as a board, next steps, give staff, make sure that staff has really clear direction moving forward, and hopefully, keep the focus on financially responsible solutions that are going to support the village's long-term goals. I am a professor, too. I love a good rubric. So on the second page of my memo is kind of how I would evaluate any new ideas that were coming up, and I think here is where, if anyone else has any suggestions, you know, please feel free to kind of jump in with this. But I think timeline, cost effectiveness, scalability and flexibility, alignment with goals, and ultimately, community impact are kind of where I am coming from after reading a lot of the memos, and how I would maybe rank different ideas, and make sure that I, these are the kind of the overarching themes that I came up with when, you know, trying to move a project forward, and what was most important to me. And I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to add to this. I just kind of keep it in the back of my mind, at least. I also think finally, then, and this isn't in there, but it came to me probably at a 2:00 AM thought, that it's a really good idea to have some numbers upfront. And I think that a lot of the proposals are talking about a potential re-scope or reduction in square footage, or purchasing additional land, and escalation factors if we were to push things off. And I think that maybe it's helpful, and even if staff can kind of give us some of those numbers right now, you know, what kind of costs we're looking at, so that when we start to go through the memos, we know what a re-scope might cost, and what pushing this off by a year might cost us. And maybe throw Cameron under the bus here right away. But I don't know if you can just give us a little bit of information on that.
So I'll just use the 22 study or re-phasing that was completed in 23. They, at that time, had estimated a year-over-year increase in cost of 6%. That vigor has not been revisited. I'm not sure if Emberg has estimates that sounds kind of in the ballpark. I think we do have some political factors going on as well. Cost of steel is a big variable, and other key materials for a facility. And so that's just to keep in mind. We could say 6%, but it could be 20% just based off of cost of material or labor. It could be less. Typically, when you see materials go up in cost, that drives just overall construction down. What that typically does is that that has a positive impact on the municipal bond market and our ability to attract projects, because there's less competition for the construction companies to have projects to do. So sometimes, even if the cost of the actual materials more, sometimes in order to fill each vendor's bucket, large projects like this are favorable in their scheme of things. So, long story short, 6% kind of year-over-year. And so the key date would be, you know, what is that timeline look on getting footings and foundations in for this year to really start construction late this year and early in the next year? Anything that's, if we have to wait for the ground to thaw and do all of that work, that could significantly impact project cost.
Can you speak a little bit to the square footage cost, too?
I am not going to speak to the square footage cost. I think we can have-
Can we get Mike a microphone? I guess can you give us what a re-scope might cost? What the average cost per square foot is? And maybe remodel square footage cost, if you have those three numbers?
Sure, that's a lot to unpack right there, but I'll do my best. So currently, the building itself is around $620 a square foot on where it sits now. That may seem like a lot, but, you know, ever since the pandemic, prices and inflation has gone up over time. So we rely on cost estimators to give this, these numbers. And Cameron's not wrong. You know, a yearly inflation is about 5% to 6%. It spiked back in '21, I believe, and that was right around the range from anywhere from 12% to 15%. So anytime you're kind of analyzing previous projects that were done before pandemic, around pandemic, it's really hard to do apples-to-apples at that point. So in general, do you, what would you like more information on? I can help on that.
If we asked you to redesign, approximately, how much are we talking about?
Sure. So if we were to, yeah, correct. So I believe Paula had asked a question on about five points that she had. So we just kind of took a guesstimation, and we looked at it, and, you know, our original schematic, I should say, pre-design was around $20,000, just for artwork. So we said maybe about $12,000 just to look at what that would mean. So that means big chunks, 8,000 square feet is a lot. So we'd be moving pieces around, see what we can do with different materials, and that would just be to kind of get us to a point of reduction and see what that meant. But seeing that we're just kind of to a bid point at this point, we would have to step back, basically back to DDs, and start kind of over a little bit. Now, all the work that we've done over the past year with the PD, that doesn't go away. That's been very helpful. So we have an understanding of how to get there. So redesign at that point, just a guesstimation, could be in the $300,000 range to $400,000 range to get this back up to bid. The other big thing with that would be is that it's going to take three to four months. We'd have to re-gauge, get these drawings back, ready to bid, and then we'd be most definitely looking at if we can do it spring, or I should say, January, February, time to bid these projects. Just adding to that, right now, we're talking with our estimator, who Myron's been helping us do the estimation. So the way that they did their process is that they sent it actually out to subs. So subs gave them real numbers. So it's a little hard to say, you know, what was brick changing that? We can get that numbers, those are historical data. But what they had a lot of interest with that, and they still get a lot of interest from companies figuring out when this is going to go to bid. I only bring that up because there's a lot of interest, which means there are going to be a lot of companies that are actually going to bid this. And what you want in a good bidding climate is multiple contractors. When that happens, people sharpen their pencils, and you hope that an estimate is just an estimate right now. So what you hope, people are sharpening their pencils, and hopefully, that's coming below. I can't guarantee that, but that's what happens in some of this.
I'm sure we'll, does anyone else have any questions initially?
Yeah, just a quick question. So the current project was bid with, or the estimates were done with winter conditions, right? Given the timeline of where we're at with the project?
They were not, no.
So the project itself would require that, given where we're going to be?
No, not necessarily. So-
Foundation work would be done?
Well, you know, if we take a step backwards, say we, say we're to go out to bid now, hypothetically. Usually, we look for four weeks to go out to bid, you have an addendum in there, all that. So the bids come back in, and we are in the end of July, say. So then it takes a little while for you guys to write a contract with them. Maybe we're in August, and they are starting to dig at the end of August, even September. So that gives you about two to three months to get your foundations in. Now, masonry work, again, the masonry work is probably going in that same time. So by the time we get to winter conditions, we will have kind of the critical parts probably done. The more we delay on this, the more we push into winter conditions. And when it was estimated, it was always estimated going out to bid in June. So the longer we delay, then winter conditions can be a factor on this.
Any other questions for Mike at this point? Otherwise, I propose we just go right in order, and trustee Benzo can kick it off with her memo. I don't know if you want to go up to the front, and then we can pull it up on the screen as well.
I'm fine right where I'm at. So all in all, the purpose, as President Nelson stated, was for us to get together and to brainstorm, make sure that we have considered all options when we're doing a huge community ask, the biggest ask in the history of the village. And I've asked a lot of questions, the other board members have asked questions, and my suggestion of considering, looking at, working with the Dane County to see if that is a feasible option. I want to preface that by saying I have never once stated to defund the police or fire 20 police officers. So I find that comment very disparaging and inappropriate. I have made a visit to the current Police Department. I had a great visit with Chief Gary and Officer Wagner. And it is very evident that the Police Department has outgrown its current situation. There's no doubt that we need to support our law enforcement and do something. And again, the purpose of this meeting was not to delay things, but to have an open discussion. And when we're having open discussions and making different proposals, it shouldn't be confrontational, it should be open and genuine. Just because we ask questions doesn't mean that this is confrontational. I feel it's in the public's best interest as taxpayers to know what we're thinking, what options we've explored. So when I'm asked as a representative of taxpayers, I'm knowledgeable myself. So you can read my memo. This may or may not even be feasible as our community grows. And again, what do we do with the existing building? And law enforcement, again, is cramped for space. I myself noticed, I'm not in law enforcement, bless you all for doing it, but I just noticed many safety hazards and other concerns. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Open it up to the board.
I don't know if this is necessarily for you, but I read that letter that we got from chairperson Anders from the town. And he made it seem like the sheriffs are in the town police building. So if we were to contract with the sheriff, would they have to be in whatever current building we have then? So I don't know that that would-
Yes, they would establish a location, technically, probably refer to it as a substation for their agency. But where they'd locate that, or how they'd locate that, I can't speak to. That'd be at the direction of the county sheriff.
Other comments from board members?
Personally, I'm not interested in exploring a contract with Dane County sheriffs. Step away from our locally accountable law enforcement that has built relationships with our community members, I think, is invaluable, and it would leave residents with fewer direct protections, slower response times. You know, there's a lot more than just the officers that are on duty patrolling. We have investigations, and people that develop these really strong relationships in our community. And, you know, to have a rotating door of sheriffs in our, in our community working, I don't, like, I don't see how that would improve service to our community or be a good value. From my conversations with community members, I think they really value those special relationships we have with our officers working on the ground. And so I think that, you know, whether or not it would save any money, I think that the investments we've made to build those relationships are, you know, extremely significant, and that's, I guess, not an option I would be interested in investigating.
And you bring up a lot of good points, Heidi. And our law enforcement does take up a substantial amount of our budget. And so again, this is a brainstorming, you know, what other options are out there? The town contracts with Dane County, and again, they're, they don't have as many residents. And I believe they contract, maybe it's around 600,000, I could be wrong, with Dane County.
Their contract is on a limited-term basis, so they have three deputies assigned a set amount of hours per week that they work. So they do not have 24/7 coverage through their contract.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting idea. Clearly, you know, I think it is a bit step backwards if we're going to continue this growth trend. But, you know, like you said, Renee, we spend $2.8 million a year on police services here. And I did look at this, after reading this, and the town of Windsor, the village of Windsor actually contracts, well, the same size, 30 square miles. So it's interesting, but I do think we are growing faster, and I think, Heidi, some of your comments certainly is, are well-vetted in terms of it's going to be a bit of a step backwards, even though I think what Renee had proposed here is parity coverage. And what is the cost of that? And again, I think at this point, we need a solution coming out of here. So I mean, I think spending time on going down this path, if it's, if it's something that, you know, our residents don't want in terms of that connection to the Police Department, the cost, I honestly believe, as I looked at this, would be, this would definitely be a lower-cost option, but you get what you pay for, and it would be less service.
Paula, do you want to add any comments on this one? You're just kind of like, making sure everyone-
Yeah, no, I appreciate you asking the questions and bringing the idea forward. That's exactly what my hope for this meeting would be, is to just, let's throw everything on the table. I do know, I was on the board when we were with the town, and I remember having to add village-only police officers, because our version of what we wanted, more of a proactive service, was very different than what the town wanted, which was a reactive service. And so in this scenario, like, I don't see that that would change with the current town board that we have and such, is, you know, if they don't have 24-hour coverage, they're not going to want 24-hour coverage, right? Like, so I get that aspect, but I do appreciate asking the question. And I think our officers here, you know, would say that they work with the county. I mean, you know, I had the misfortune of having to dial 911 a couple of weeks ago, and the first person on scene was a state trooper, the second was a Dane County sheriff. And then two of our officers, and then Lieutenant Wagner and Detective Carter, it was kind of all hands on deck. But so my point being, they all are working in concert together, which is great, to have that extra support. So that's, I guess, all I wanted to add.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Cameron, for, say we were to contract with the sheriff's department and say it's $600,000 annually, would that count towards maintenance of effort going forward?
It would negatively impact maintenance of effort. So you'd see a 15% reduction. But again, we've used this argument before, sometimes you don't spend 15% if it's, if the cost is exponential. So yes, if we, if we, if we reduce the, so we have, we currently have an accredited agency, and so that's, would be the training portion of it. If we would be reducing our cost, we would miss two out of the three criteria, and then we would be subject to the 15% reduction in supplemental aid.
So if we were to, that's if, sorry. If we were to contract on top of what we have for force already?
If we were to contract for what we, so would the, would contracting be supplementing the current force? Is what you're saying? Okay. I don't believe so, because you're, it's a cost additive. We'd have to ask. I think we just have to go through the forum. I would have to think about it with chief.
I have nothing new to add to the conversation, but I am hearing that most are not- I have nothing new to add to the conversation, but I am hearing that most are not in favor at this point of pursuing this, so we'll just, we'll move on if that's all right with everyone.
Cindy, could I have just a quick second?
Sure.
You know, a lot of the things I kind of saw was, you know, we're talking about cost and the 2.8 million. Out of the 604 municipalities in Wisconsin, the Village of Cottage Grove ranks 200th for per capita funding of police. So we're, again, we're not at the top of the list, but we're not at the bottom of the list. So just one, when we're talking about these conversations, I just wanted to put kind of where we are in the scheme of things.
Could you just repeat that real quick one more time? 200 of...
200th of 604.
Per capita spent on police?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I guess, maybe I will say something, that we had made a concerted effort over the last handful of years to, kind of like that, comparable to other communities in terms of our police force. And we do have four to five times the calls, I think, of the town. We do have the SRO and the K9, which I think are assets. And we do a lot of proactive policing, which is why we are the second safest community in Wisconsin. So there's a lot of good here, don't want that to go unnoticed. All right, I think we'll move on to Trustee Dahl, who has memo number two for us.
Yeah, sure, thank you. And thanks, everybody, for coming and speaking out on this. Obviously, I've been through the station with Chief Gary, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues in terms of what the department's dealing with right now. And so clearly, we need to do something. I met with several staff members, I met with Kyla, we went through the public works requirements, et cetera. And it really, it's really a puzzle. And certainly, building is the best option. The question is, in my mind, it's in an industrial park. And it's off the beaten path, it's not on Cottage Grove Road, it's not on Main Street. Nobody's really, this isn't, this isn't, doesn't need to be a showcase. And it's a beautiful building, it's absolutely a beautiful building. And I certainly think that what we've got would be a great asset moving forward. The question in my mind is cost, I'm very sensitive. I've spoken to a lot of people in the community, a lot of people are very sensitive to a $20 million asset. And so the question really is, what are the alternatives? And that's why I appreciate what Paula had, had said, is, you know, let's kind of take, let's take a little bit of a pause and let's vet this out. And I know, Sarah, you guys had vetted out a lot, but I think, in my mind, there's really two options, or two things that we really should look at. First of all, is, we have the MSB building. And per the plan that I got from Aaron, I think the police department has 12,000 square feet, somebody said 18,000. The bottom line is, we need more space. Building 28,000 square feet and vacating that 12,000 creates a problem, right? And so when we're talking about 20 million, no, it's more than $20 million because we're going to have to go back in and redevelop or reconfigure 12,000 square feet or whatever space we give up at the police department for Public Works or Park and Rec. So there's going to be additional costs. I haven't seen that anywhere, and I don't know, Cam, if that's penciled in on any...
That Kyla has some...
Yeah, so in my mind, we need to complete the plan because it's not complete. And we don't want to delay, and I'm not suggesting that we, we take a massive delay on this. So the two alternatives that I'm thinking of is, I've built a lot of buildings in my, in my engineering operations career. And the existing building is considered a pre-engineered metal building. That's where municipal services is today. I just completed a building, I talked with, with the general contractor, which is ABC, which is Pat Baldwin, who, who lives right here in Cottage Grove. But the bottom line is this, we really, I haven't seen any documents, anything that looked at extending the municipal services building utilizing a pre-engineered metal building. A pre-engineered metal building, cost per square foot right now is about $100 and 1/4 to $150 a square foot. That's for the shell. Then when you talk about building out the types of space that we need, you know, in lines, in line with what was, what's on the table right now, some of the security features, some of the, you're talking probably $200 a square foot on top of that for that area. So net-net, we're talking, we could build a building. And I'm not suggesting that we have to do this, but it would save taxpayers a lot of money. And Mike, you know, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know for a fact it would save a lot of money. And again, we've spent a million on, on engineering. A&E on a, in, pre-engineered metal building is for, of a 20,000-square-foot building is probably $250,000 to $300,000. So if there's appetite for it, I mean, that could be done very, very quickly. It changes the scope of this. And the driver in my mind is twofold. One is capital, right? We're spending a lot of money, we're committing a lot of resources. Our debt, our debt capacity is getting gobbled up quite a bit by this. I've heard from a lot of people that, that, in the community, that they're very concerned about taxes and the impact that this is going to have, et cetera. And again, I appreciate everything that you've done, Cameron, to time this with the closure of TID 5 so that taxes don't go up that much. But at the end of the day, I don't want to spend money just because we have it. We want to spend it on the right thing. We want to get the police department the facility they need. It doesn't need to be a grand building right on the corner of Progress and Bonnie, right in the middle of an industrial park. I don't want to build a Cleary building. I don't want to build something that is really low-end. I want to make sure the police department has what they need, but I want to do it in the context of spending taxpayer money wisely. And when I ran, it was all on fiscal responsibility. I am a fiscal responsible person, and I pride myself in that. And I think that's a viable option. If we don't go down that path, and then Kyla, I'd like you to share your comments. If we don't go down that path, I firmly believe that we owe it to this community to do a value engineering exercise or a cost-reduction exercise, and Mike's familiar with that is. And the, the objective would be to go in and take a look at all elements of this design and where can we drive out costs right now upfront? We don't want, you know, it's, example is granite countertops versus cultured marble. Kohler fixtures versus Mowen fixtures. And certainly don't want to put the cheap, cheap Menard stuff in, but you certainly want value for the community. And that's the second thing that I would say, is if we don't have an appetite for a drastic financial reduction in the cost of the facility that the department desperately needs, that we aggressively go down a value engineering exercise. And ideally drive 5%, maybe, maybe get a million dollars out of it. But those, those were the two alternatives that I think we need to discuss.
So I picked out a couple of things. So can we have someone speak to the, the location of the police department being in a, where it is, I guess, now, if Chief, you want to speak to that? I think we talked about it a couple of meetings ago too, but that was one of the first, I was just writing comments down.
So, location obviously corresponds with the MSB building, with the whole function of the village's services that are provided. Also, it corresponds with, that was the purpose of that land being purchased well before my time being here, of the expansion of the facilities and the needs of the community. You reference also the design feature of it. While it is an industrial area, it was also taken in consideration that directly to the north is a neighborhood. So not to have just a shell-building style for the neighbors that are going to be seeing it, that live there. This is not, and I know it's been referenced this way, there is no Taj Mahal in this facility whatsoever. You talk about value engineering, we're not getting Kohler, we're not doing marble, we're not doing gold-plated anything. That, this has been all taken in consideration to make sure our plan for this facility is the long-term, low-maintenance durability of such structure so that the village isn't reinvesting in it in, let's say, 10 to 15 years because there needs to be repairs done to the exterior or because things are breaking down on the interior. Yes, there's natural wear and tear, just as everybody, everybody's house has. But again, the whole purpose of this facility was fiscally thought out for the community's sake.
And then, Kyla, can you speak to the, kind of the long-term vision of MSB?
Absolutely. So I'm going to share two PDFs here, actually. The first one being existing, kind of the existing conditions of the MSB building as it stands today, kind of highlighted by departments. So this was put together a while ago. You can see that the light blue area is police, using both the garage and a lot of, of the space inside the building. Parks and Rec is the light green, so they've got offices up front. They've got programming in the back as well, in one of the bays. And then the Public Works is the yellowish color, including a few offices, some staff, as well as vehicle storage racks and some vehicles included in the garage as well. And then Aaron's got his office in the corner. His is more yellow-yellow instead of the mustard-yellow. So this just shows the existing conditions of kind of how things are laid out. If you come into the MSB building as a shift changes or as our Public Works staff shows up at 6:00 and 2:30, you will see that vehicles are stacked back and forth of each other. And there's maneuvering that has to go in and out for Public Works staff, as well as PD staff, when they arrive at work. As well as, that doesn't include the shifting that has to go around at Bonnie Road as well. In this PDF, one second, I can't see the top of my screen. This is what, we currently have an internal draft of potentially what could be used for this building if the police department moves out into their future site, as it's been discussed. You have significant additional space for Public Works vehicles, equipment, storage. We currently have plows that have our, the piles of the wings are currently outside for some of our plows. Not all of our plows are stored inside for the wings, which does create damage and long-term wear and tear on that. Additionally, you're able to have more Park and Recs programming, more space for equipment, vehicles. There is a plan that we can implement and not have any fiscal responsibility at this time. We do have the room for storage. We have Public Works staff that are extremely handy, that can take down walls that are not load-bearing to allow for more storage area. Just by Public Works moving into where police is now, it would give us at least another, potentially 10 years to utilize that space without a big need. It would eventually, as we're a growing community and our staff continues to hopefully grow, by 2037, 2040, you would need additional garage space as that has been shown out in the capital improvements plan, in the facilities plan. However, this also does allow open space for reallocated Village Hall staff as they are about out of space over here as well, in addition to additional planning staff when that needs become available. Overall, it is a draft, something that we've been talking about internally, but there is an outline for what could be used for that area.
So what you're showing requires no incremental capital, for the, for the most part?
Correct.
Okay, that was, that was the one piece, I wasn't clear, so I haven't seen this. So thank you so much for putting that together. That helps, so that, that helps. So going back to Chief, your comments, I'm not suggesting that land that we build or the land that's there today, my thought would be, we would build, it's similar to what Chris has in his document, that we would build modules on, and it would be very flexible. You'd build an MS, or a pre-engineered metal building, probably in the same 35-foot wide. It's about a 5,000-square-foot bay, probably build four bays right away. It'd be configured strictly for, for PD, it would be isolated. It would be to the left of this, if you look at where the building is. And you could just add on, and it would go straight into the existing land. That, that's kind of the, the option that I mapped out. And clearly, it would be a 15- to 20-year building, it would be a brand-new building in terms of where we're at, it's going to have a different look. And I would say that, you know, the whole, going back to the value engineering, I mean, I'm not suggesting it's designed with marble, I'm suggesting that's the example of what value engineering means when, before you actually build a building. And, and I don't know, Mike, if you had comments on it, but that's what I was talking about.
So as for the value engineering, yes, I understand what you're saying. And it's a matter of what you're looking for. If you're looking for a million dollars, is what you suggested, I mean, we have the solar panels on there, which is an ad alternate. So you don't have to take that alternate, we're already at $500,000. So, you know, talking to Myron about this, they said that, you know, you could probably VE, which basically means stripping down lots of stuff in there, to what level that I do not know at this point. But you could probably get 5% out, even if you took away the solar panels at that point. Now, it's a combination of materials, but, you know, ultimately, it's going to fall down to some of the necessities that the police need in the station as well. Whether it's equipment, level of equipment, ballistic security. There was mention about sound before. So during this design, we pay pretty good attention with for sound in there because a lot of these things in a police station are very sound-critical, right? You don't want to be next to another one here in a conversation. So a lot of that stuff could be stripped down, but then you're getting less value on what that building is, but maintaining the space.
Yeah, I, I think, I wouldn't suggest compromising any functionality, right? Form follows function. What I'm suggesting is, I think you've been through these before, Mike.
Yeah.
What do you think the timeline and cost would be to do a VE exercise on this, to try to get 5% out?
Well, you know, I think that it would take, much to, like I mentioned about Paula's request, you know, I think that the observations probably will take a few weeks to do it, throw in the holidays that come up, so three weeks by the time we kind of look at what could potentially be done to minimize this and have basically a spreadsheet of what things could come out. You're right, yeah, it's, it happens all the time. It's just part of the, part of the business.
So your memo had outlined, Pete, the reduction in 10% to 20%, but is 5% seems a little bit more realistic based on what Mike just said?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, 10% to 20% is a very aggressive, I mean, you're going to give up stuff. I mean, I don't know what the right number is, typically 5% to 10% is, is where I would like to see it. I think 5%, as I've kind of gone through the estimates, should be doable. But again, it comes down to, you know, going through, these are the trade-offs, and then Chief and the, and the rest of the police department input would, would take a look and go, no, can't give up that, yes, I can give up this, or we can change this, right?
I mean, I think I, personally, I see the value in value engineering. I will mention that the project right now with the pre-bid is coming in at $3 million under budget. I, I guess I imagine maybe running through these exercises if we were over budget or if we were right at that, but because we're already coming in significantly under, I guess, that's something that I've been, I've been thinking about.
I totally understand, we've got the FMP and we got the budget. But I think, you know, the, the people that I speak to and the sensitivity that we've got on, on taxes is, I don't, we could be $10 million under budget, right? But if there is an opportunity to save 5% and not compromise, you know, what is delivered in the end to any appreciable amount, then, then we owe it to the taxpayers in Cottage Grove to do that.
And it, yeah, it sounds like, yeah, I think we would all probably agree not compromising our functionality and coming in as far under a budget as possible, it would be ideal. And I, I guess we did hear that the, there's an option to remove the solar, which would already get us kind of like halfway to that benchmark of your million dollars.
So the solar was in the $20 million?
Yeah.
Original estimate? Wonderful.
All right, comments, additional comments for, under Trustee Dahl's memo?
I, I just, kind of when we're talking about cost, a lot of the kind of costs that I see are more variable, are kind of the end costs, so furnishings and such. So there's, I think there's an opportunity to do value engineering, exercises as, if the project goes forward towards the end of the, you know, as we're, you know, we have several months that we would have to lead up. And, you know, we could also look at, again, Chief could look at what spaces are being utilized now. And then there are areas that could, that we'd be growing into that maybe don't need to be fully furnished right away. And so there, I think there's a way to, again, cut down costs. Matt and I have gone through a couple times in looking for areas and, and really questioned a lot of kind of the, the extras on the project. And have really kind of had, asked the architects that, kind of those questions. So yes, that hasn't been done in a public meeting, but there's been a couple rounds of those processes.
So are you saying that there's still an option to go to bid, kind of on the timeline that we're at, that Mike outlined, but still perhaps do some of the exercises that Trustee Dahl has suggested?
So the way the allowances work, that I believe is, that's not actually part of the bid package. We have an allowance, our internal allowance that are identified as part of that major project cost to buy the necessary equipment and finishings that need to be in the building? That's correct. So, so we, when we, when the project goes out to bid, we're only bidding the building. There are other allowances that we have to pay, our separate buckets that we manage?
This might also be putting you on the spot, you have to... This might also be putting you on the spot, you have to, quick math in your head. I'm talking to you, Cameron. But if we were to reduce by another million dollars, what's the million dollars off this project, the impact to the average taxpayer, and the impact to the debt capacity? You can use your calculator if you need to.
I'm going to be honest, a million dollars a rounding factor. We're so conservative in our growth estimates that our growth, like, if we grow, like, I believe we will, even this year and next year, it could completely change what we're currently presenting and be much lower. But we want to make sure that what we're giving you are conservative estimates. From a debt capacity perspective, yeah, I wouldn't be comfortable, I mean, it depends.
That wasn't helpful, I'm just kidding.
But the million dollars when we were doing the library project, a million dollars in donations or reduction in spend was $50 to the average taxpayer, right? Wasn't that the number?
But that was operations plus capital. A little bit more complicated.
I think we're kind of going on a rattle here, quite honestly.
Comments for Trustee Doll? All right, who's next? Is that me? Made the timeline that you all have in front of you, and I don't know if Cameron or someone can bring it up online so that others can see it as well. My memo is to strongly advocate for advancing the proposed police station to the bidding phase as presented. I think I have sat in every village board meeting since the winter of 2019, in the back corner where Britt is sitting right now, with my book, but I have absorbed through osmosis all of the projects that had been going on at that time. And I listened to conversations, and I saw all the work that had gone into it. And I dug everything out over the last couple of weeks, and I kind of put this together, because it's just how I synthesize things. But there was a need identified in 2015 with board action. We knew that there was going to be a long-term space solution that was going to have to be invested in. I sat in that corner and watched that master planning process start, and then also pause. And I saw the effects of not having a financial management plan approved. I saw that there was a time where village board didn't give direction on facilities and move that forward. And at that same time, we continued to grow in both business and residential growth. And then there was that post-COVID boom to significant increases in construction costs. In 2023, re-engaged with FGM on facilities, space needs. The idea back then was to do a full village campus. And at one point in 2021, had cost $20 million. Now we're looking at a $55 million, $52 million village campus, and it's just too expensive, and those hard conversations did happen. There was a re-scope to look at department priorities. And the police station, I think, like I say in my memo, has consistently emerged as the most pressing capital facility needed. Also has the most unique needs. We've heard tonight, sound is a big issue, safety is an issue, being able to have hard interview, soft interview, all the things that we've learned, you know, over the last year of designing and rearranging, and trying to cut down and trying to move this facility on this plot of land. The 44,000 square feet of what the police actually need was $35 million, and that was deemed to be too expensive. I think at one point, I even asked Matt, well, why don't we just, you know, bite the bullet, and let's build for what we need, because we know that it's going to be the cheapest today. And that is, you know, something that the Cottage Grove taxpayer can't absorb all at once. So there was board direction to re-scope and fit within the financial landscape and solve, you know, space needs for this next 15 to 20 years. And if we don't grow, we still have room in that facility. If we do grow faster than what is projected, we have a plan to move forward, not only for the police stations for additions that have already been thought into this design, but for the MSB, which we just saw, you know, how it shifts and fits the needs for other departments as well, and ultimately, the whole village. And I really kind of envisioned this progress drive to become kind of the municipal campus by building this building. It's, you know, the re-scope, cut the police station down from the 44,000 or 47,000, that might be a typo on there, to the 27.5 that we see today. And that 23 million, we know that is coming in 3 million under budget, based on, you know, the pre-bid final review. And that is a win that this board needs to take. It solves space problems, it creates the space solutions for other departments, it gives us the ability to have, you know, continue to grow and have new staff and meet the community needs. You know, this is, we have a space crisis, and we have, because we have significantly under-invested in public facility infrastructure since Village Hall was built in 1995. It's, you know, I really appreciate, I do like going through this exercise, I think it's fun. I would have been more fun if we could all sit up front and do presentations, but I understand not wanting to do that. There's space issues, space crisis, these are space solutions. We have gone through and invested the 1.2, or 1.1, or we know whatever, over a million dollars in architect and engineering that should not go to waste, because that is irresponsible of us to completely pivot at this point. I think it's a little unheard of to be going through this type of exercise at this stage in the game. But I think that, you know, it does show that to the community that we are being very careful in investing. But this, I really do feel that this is a six-year project that has, you know, we are at the 11th hour, the 12th hour, whatever hour we're at, it's time to move forward. I'm happy to take questions on my memo.
Hey, one if I may? You said in this project, I'm curious what you didn't like about it before and what changed your mind?
That's a good question. I think, I mean, obviously, I come from a place of sitting in that back corner and being very committed to a library facility and community space. And all of the things that I personally want in this community, and it's not about what I want, it's what about the community wants, but also what the community needs. We heard strongly that the community does not want a physical library space at this time, at that location. And I will listen to those, to my constituents in that manner. But police station and solving facility needs is what the community needs. And I think I have obviously sat through all of the meetings with you all. I have toured, I have sat down with every staff member. I have called, I have done my research, I've read everything. I've tried to synthesize the best I can to wrap my mind around it. This is the step that needs to happen. I came from a place of not having all of the facts and information, and I have those facts now, which is why I can make that decision.
I just want to say, Cindy, thanks for laying it all like this, I really like timelines. But I agree with 100%. I mean, we have to do something, there is no question about that. The question is what we're talking about here tonight, right?
All right, if there are no comments for me, we can move on to Trustee Murphy.
All right, thank you. I guess while Cindy was sitting in the corner since 2019, I've been sitting here at this table, talking with many various colleagues about the challenges in our village facilities and the growth we've experienced, and how do we provide critical services to our community? We've talked a lot about different facilities, like Cindy mentioned before, you know, asking the community about a want, and serving the community at our police station, and making sure our officers are equipped with the facility that they need to do their job in a safe manner, keep all of the people that they serve, community members, victims, people that have committed crimes. To keep everyone safe, we have to invest in this facility to make sure we're ready for everything that comes tomorrow. So I wanted to take my memo back a little bit further, because 10 years ago, when the village police department was formed, that village board knew that the space was not going to be adequate in the long term. And they purchased the property next to MSB as well. So we would have the flexibility to locate our services in one area, because that creates a lot of efficiencies. You know, if public works needs to help with something else, or, you know, just maintenance of the areas and having Bonnie Road across the street, just having everything located in one area, with the exception of Village Hall, is significantly like advantageous for our staff and their flexibility and response times and ability to access equipment, and just be ready for what the community needs. So my proposal is actually continue and buy the next property next door that is vacant, that goes adjacent to the neighborhood. You know, that provides us with space in the future. We know that there's not a lot of open vacant spots in the village that we could locate a police department, let alone a public works department, that you don't really want on like a main road. I think that that's an excellent location in the village for those departments. So to have that next lot over, you know, we may not be able to get that lot back. So it's, I think it's worth considering. You know, we'd have room to expand, or, you know, configure things a little bit differently, access differently in the future if we, you know, need to grow into that space. So I think that's something worth considering. Otherwise, you know, I sat through all of these things. We started out, you know, trying to locate everyone there at once, and that was not feasible. And then that cost way skyrocketed. And then we were at the 44,000 square feet. So we've already done this, we can't afford this, let's cut back. What is it that we can use? How do we make the space flexible so we can add on the future once we need it? So it's been a long process, six years in the making, that we've decided this is what the most critical need in our community, to provide critical services to our community.
Comments or questions for Heidi or staff on the purchase of additional land?
I think it's a great idea to be a little bit more forward-thinking. And I don't know where and how that would work into the financial management plan. I don't know what Hamburg would want for that land, but I think those are things we need to answer. I think that's really not what is first at hand here, but I think that's something we need to take up. So thank you for bringing that up.
Other comments? I would like to see it pursued, not tonight, but in the future. Trustee Severson?
Well, thank you, and thank you for taking my suggestion. The last time I was on the board, we would do budget workshop, similar to this, so we could just kind of get everything out. And so that was in my mind. So I just want to say a couple things. Renee, I really appreciated your comments about being able to ask questions, because I've kind of felt the same way. I've asked a lot of questions, and I don't feel like it's been pushback, it's just me doing my due diligence, like, that's just who I am as a person. You can ask my husband, I ask questions about everything. So I really appreciate that. For me, this is probably, unless I'm on the village board for the next 10 years, is probably the biggest decision I'll ever make. And when it comes to decision-making, I take the route of my grandfather. He was a carpenter, and he always said, "Measure twice, cut once." And so for me, that means, again, asking my questions, doing my due diligence. And while I know some at the table have had a longer time than I have had, I've only had a little over two months to measure twice, right? So besides all the other thing as a new village board member to get up to speed, this is a lot of information. So I'm a little bit behind the eight ball with the rest of you, but I've worked really hard to catch up. So since our last meeting, I have met with Chief Gary and Matt. I've asked a whole bunch of questions of the architect, as he mentioned, and then obviously put this memo together, just a few highlights. And I think, you know, without really understanding what value engineering meant, I think I was trying to get to some of those same sort of concepts by pulling out five things that I asked then the architect to look at. And it's clear to me through the conversation that we cannot do a lot of the engineering that would like get the building size down, those kind of things. But I think, you know, we've hit on a couple of things that I guess I would pull out and highlight, which is pulling out $500,000 for the solar, and then looking at those allowances that Cameron mentioned and finishes. You know, I think of things like the big customized logo, right? Like, how much does that add to the cost? Like, just things like that, that I think maybe we do still have some wiggle room on. So I guess I'm pulling back a little bit on my memo in that regard. But I think for me, one of the biggest things I've had to wrap my mind around is there aren't really good comparables, apples to apples, police department to police department. So I tried to look around Dane County, and I put those in my memo, if you go to page two, that I looked at, for instance, the cost of the Mount Horb Public Safety Building and the McFarland Public Safety Building, which has combination departments with fire and EMS. And I, like intuitively, felt like, why is ours so much more expensive? And I do understand the square footage, and I understand when you have fire and EMS, you're going to have a lot of just concrete slab, right, for the bays for the trucks. But I still just intuitively feel like perhaps ours is a little bit more expensive. And so that's where, if you'd like to come up, please, you might as well just sit up here, I'm just saying.
Yeah, since we don't get to do our demonstrations.
So for that, and I don't know that we need to go through a whole value engineer exercise, but can you walk me through maybe, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at these, but what are some of the fundamental differences that increase the cost? Because I'm aware that the cost of construction is up. I did some research on the Martinson Cost Index, and, you know, understand that, you know, we're already up 2% for the first quarter of 2025. Milwaukee area, which they do big cities, was up 4% over the last 12 months. Like, I get that.
True.
But like, things like brick, for instance, how much does that add to the project? And so if there is a way for us to get to some type of reduction and still move forward with, you know, putting out bids, like, I would love that as a solution. So can you talk about maybe what could be done in that scope?
Sure, yeah, so just to go to your two examples. So the Mount Horb was actually completed in 2019, and was bid in 2017. So that was pre-pandemic. And pandemic blew everything away. So the McFarland one's an interesting one, a very nice building. And I believe that was done in '23, and I don't know the final numbers of what happened on those. You know, what it's shown, maybe 20 million, but we don't know exactly how much it was based on that. Because that happened right around the time it was bid, just right around COVID at that time, too. So it's hard to understand apples to apples. But if you look at both those buildings, and it goes back to what Pete said earlier, if you look at them, they are, there's wood, and there's glass. So it's something that comes along with a civic building, right? So, you know, kind of going back to something Pete said earlier about, you know, being in that industrial park, well, it doesn't need to look like an industrial building. You know, a building like this is a civic building. It's something that the village Cottage Grove should be proud of, and that it's someplace that people will go. And I go back to what the chief was saying a long time ago, is that he wants this police station to be something that people go there for good things, like the community room. And so that's kind of what led a lot of this design. So, you know, if stipulations were different earlier on, and you set that budget at 17 million, then we might have made some different decisions at that point. So that's just a backtrack on that. So back to the McFarland building, it's a great design. I think they're going after net zero, which is very impressive, and coming in at $21 million for their size, so you hit one of the big things. So they have, I think it's 56,000? They have about 21,000 of garage space. Garage space is a fraction of what a police station is. You know, I believe we have around 5,000 square feet in this one of garage space. So that comes at a lower cost. So I think that helps offset some of that. But I can't, you know, the only thing I can kind of attach on those four years ago and inflation that happens on that.
Mike, I can add, similar timeframe, but we were just doing the study phase. But the UPGM study had looked at, and I'm not suggesting it's apples to apples to the McFarland project, but it was, that was the village campus concept at that time. And they were projecting And they were projecting that total cost to implement that project at that time at twenty million in twenty twenty-one. So things just escalated a lot and we grew more and all of that, so.
Correct. Yeah. So again, you can, um, you know, VE happens a lot. Usually it doesn't happen when you're under budget, but it happens. And there's ways that we can look at different cheaper materials, but sometimes you're going to get cheaper materials, which means there's more maintenance and things get run down on that thing. So, you know, the pre-engineered buildings are made for that exact reason. They're made cheaper, quicker, but their shelf life is a lot shorter. The building that we propose and the buildings that we do, we want them to last a hundred years, right? So we build them the right way. And with today and sustainability, we build them so that we are, you know, conscious about energy. And there's energy codes we have to deal with as well. So that kind of all factors into it. But yeah, again, we can look at different materials. You're going to get some savings, but you know, if we're looking for millions of dollars, you're not just going to get that out of materials. Eventually, space would have to be cut to really take something significant. That help or did I answer?
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
McFarland was net zero. They received one point three million dollars in IRA credits to offset the cost of the solar and geothermal and other waste stuff. So, um, I think we asked, we, we estimated roughly, I think, four hundred thousand dollars between the, the, or I know you conservatively did thirty percent. We went through the other exercise, it'd be about forty percent of the, um, solar cost and the geothermal.
So just a wrap up comment. So in this whole scenario, um, I, I want to make it very clear, I support the police. I have for a very, very long time. But I also am coming off an election, right? Where I walked thirty-seven miles, um, going door to door in this village. I've never done thirty-seven miles of anything in my life. And had a lot of really co- good conversations with taxpayers who are just concerned about taxes, right? So what I would love to see as a compromise or something is if we can shave some of the costs off, maybe remove the solar and work on the allowances, but also look for ways then throughout the budget process to perhaps pull back in some other areas so that the tax impact to the residents isn't substantial, right? So keeping all of this in mind, not sacrificing safety, um, not starting from scratch, not doing any of those things, um, but trying to lessen the tax impact. That's where my heart is at, um, in this. So, um, I, I appreciate all the extra time and questions that all of you have answered. Like I said, I know it feels like I'm being a pain, but I'm just, it's a big decision. There's some anxiety with that, to be honest. So, questions?
Go ahead, Chris.
So I'm trying to just think of ways to reduce it without having to go back and re-engineer everything. And my, I guess this is a question for you. How, how feasible would it be to say, cut out one of these conference rooms or the community room or the fitness room? Because those are on the edge and those could always be added in at a later time.
Yeah, that's, um, well, it's kind of because of where we're at, it's a little intertwined with not just the architecture, it's easy enough to move walls for us, but you have to move structure, MEP and everything that's involved with that. So if we're taking off the community room, that's a big thing and it changes a lot of things. So you kind of have to go back to the board. If we're to lose the CID conference room at the end, maybe not so bad at that point. So there is some difficulties at this stage of the game to kind of take big chunks of square footage out of here. If you're just shaving off that office, you're not too hard to do it, but it's going to take some time to go back and redo some of this work. Thank you.
So I think, I mean, Chris brings up a good point. If we remove some of those spaces, like the community room or a couple of conference rooms, we have to add them back at some point. And so those are going to, eventually it costs more to do that than it does to do it right the first time.
Correct. Yeah. So if you took out, you know, if you took out four thousand square foot out at this time and you wanted to put it back in five, 10 years, it's going to cost twice as much as what you do now. And that's just kind of the economy of scale. Doing it now is a lot cheaper. It's not just a pitch for me to say that, but it is. So if you have to do small additions, multiple small additions are more costly because you have to mobilize and construct and interrupt. So it becomes more expensive that way.
I take your point, but that's also an argument for not expanding in the future and just building that stuff now as well. We're the two expansion places we have.
But I think that goes to the re-scope from twenty twenty-three where it financially was, it made a lot more sense to reduce, do the full design and plan in 10 to 15 years to have to do an expansion. And I, I understand that point. It's like it would, we should just build the whole thing right now as big as possible because it's never going to get any cheaper, but that's just not realistic. And maybe Cameron, you can tell me how unrealistic I am with that.
Yeah, I guess maybe this is good. So I think when we looked at a project, when, when we got the large, um, fifty-two million dollar municipal campus idea, um, I think we realized we really need to start with tax impact and work our way backwards. So I worked with Ellers and I said, okay, what can a hundred and fifty dollars on the average taxpayer give us? And what can three hundred dollars on the average taxpayer give us? And we worked backwards into the range at which you saw in the FMP. So that's where that number came from. How do we, how do we get into something? And so we realized a hundred and fifty was not going to, was not going to move the, the needle, was not going to get done. It was the, it was not the cost effective. So both of those levels were presented to the village board. Ultimately, the three hundred dollar impact, which that got us to the twenty-one to twenty-three million dollar range. Um, and that's kind of what has driven this process until this point. And so, um, kind of as we're, we're working through that, we hope for the best. You know, we hope, you know, as Mike had mentioned, this project hasn't even gone out to bid yet. We might solve our one million dollar problem taking it out to bid. It just comes back that much cheaper. And then some of this value engineering can still be done, but we don't, we don't even know what hard construction cost numbers are. We have what was estimated by RMRN, which should be fairly accurate for the market conditions.
Can you just remind me once again, the tax impact? And how with the TID, like we've all talked about the TID five closure. Can you just remind us all once again?
Yep. So I think kind of working backwards from that kind of initial data, that three hundred was always the goal, three hundred, the gross impact. So when we talk about bringing on a facility, both the operating and the capital cost of that building, we were, we're, we're in that, depending on the year and when the debt service is, that the gross impact is between three hundred and three fifty on the average home. Now, when we talk about the added value that the TID nine or TID five comes back on the tax roll, that's, that's spreading those tax dollars across more units of taxable property, which drives the tax rate down. And so when we're presenting the net rate, we're presenting the rate as the impact on the village taxes. Other districts like Dane County, Manona Grove, um, and Madison Tech College may see actual decreases because they make their own decisions and we're adding that much more value onto the tax rule. I don't know what decisions those boards have made or will make. And then kind of finally, you know, when I'm looking at this from a financial perspective, I need enough debt to fall off in about that twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, when we would address EMS and fire needs. And then finally, when Ted eight, nine and 10 fall off in twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, we're probably going to have to do something with the, with this police station or other municipal needs. So it's kind of that, it's getting into that cadence of strategically addressing these needs. And again, um, to Heidi's point, um, I, I do think it would be a good idea to engage Rudabesh into strategically looking for areas of land that may be good for the most cost effective options moving forward.
Can you just remind us, uh, when the TID is going to fall off and when this building's taxes would activate?
So twenty twenty-seven is when the, the impact of the debt service on this building would hit the tax roll for the first time.
So twenty twenty-six taxes payable in twenty twenty-seven?
Yep. So it'd be the December tax bill that goes out that, that's for the twenty twenty-seven. So, so right now, the debt service that has already been approved, there's nothing that the village board can do to change that tax impact. That bill is going to be what it is. The, at this point in time, it's all about the operating side. And so, um, really when we're looking at a facility like this, it would be honing in on twenty twenty-seven. And again, there's a lot of things that may happen between now and then with value brought on, new homes. And so what we're using is the best information we have now.
Chief, can you maybe talk about, I mean, we talked about the community room, multiple conference rooms. We spent all of November talking about the bathrooms. Can you give us, you know, your, we're building so that there is, we're not squishing you into a new building. We're building so that you have room to grow. Can you talk about some of the spaces maybe and how they're used or if they can, if they can be used by other departments? And if, you know, how you anticipate that your agency growing into the space, I guess?
Sure. I'd be happy to. We have talked about these things in the past. Again, um, as Mike referenced, um, when this project started, I did emphasize that one of the features that I wanted as part of this building was a community room because that is something that this community is in need of, um, and having that space. The community room has multiple different functions and Mike showed that in various plans. Do I envision it being used as a banquet hall? No. But do I envision that civic clubs and organizations can utilize the space? Yes. Do I envision that library programming can use the space? Yes. Can I envision, um, should the municipal court ever go in person? That room would get used once a month and have a minimum of fifty people probably showing up every month in that space. And that's on a conservative estimate. The other part of that community room functionality, uh, I know Lisa's, uh, worked very hard to make a partnership with Manona Grove School District and has, uh, a second polling location. But this also gives that another opportunity if we need to make an adjustment, need to make a change, this community room could you, be utilized in such a manner, um, which then is under the village's control and not worrying about coordinating other schedules. The command conference room, uh, that room is positioned at the front of the building for a strategic reason. One, um, I envision that room actually being utilized for potentially LEC meetings, um, when there isn't a large attendance. Uh, I also can envision that room being utilized by other departments, i.e. it's right at the front of the building. They have a conference room that they can have meetings in. The purpose of the, what's referenced as the criminal investigation division, uh, conference room, both purpose behind that is literally, that's a detective's meeting area. There's some sensitive crimes. There's some sensitive matters where it's a collaborative effort amongst other agencies. This gives them a space and area that they actually can meet. And it's not just utilized by the Village Cottage Grove Police Department, but it's utilized by multiple agencies, uh, to have that, uh, secure area to have those sensitive talks and conversations. And also be able to lay out a game plan of how they're handling their investigation. So those are the three rooms that always seem to come up, uh, for question of why they're necessary or how they're necessary. Again, going back in time, uh, obviously emergency management has its function within the village. It has its function within the town. Currently, uh, the emergency operation center is located in the basement of the ESB. This also, this facility also can act as an emergency operation center and having those multiple conference rooms actually facilitate having locations to be able to set up a large scale EOC if need be. Again, I'm not being disparaging towards what the town has set up or what's in ESB, but if you've ever been in that room, that is a confined area. That area is also going to get very chaotic, um, because you're going to have all the volunteer firefighters showing up to respond to deal with whatever emergencies going on. So there's going to be a lot of commotion and activity going there. So that's some of the, the features related to this facility. Again, as Mike had referenced, some of the, uh, materials were selected because we want this to be a facility that is long-term, long-lasting, low maintenance, low care, so that you're not having to reinvest or put additional monies into the sustainability of this building. Again, we've all been in building projects. When you build them now, they're going to cost more every year you keep adding on and every addition you make. And I know there's been reference to cookie cutter, uh, sort of applications, i.e. small incremental additions. I think Cameron has some reservations about those small incremental additions, uh, from a financial impact, uh, just for the borrowing aspect, but also for the cost aspect for the future. It's going to cost you more for every little s- add-on you put on. I'm trying to avoid that for this community. I know this is a, a large price tag. That has never been in the back of my mind, i.e. it's always been a forefront of, we have to be fiscally responsible to this community and for the citizens of this community. I'm trying to bring you the best product forward that's going to be there for you long-term, well after I'm retired. Hopefully, well after you've all served your terms on the board and it's three boards into it. That's what I'm trying to achieve with the facility that I've worked to bring forward to you. And it isn't just me. This has been a whole agency effort, um, and it's been a whole community effort, so.
Certainly back to Paula's memo then. Is there any other comments for, for Paula or questions for staff on kind of what you brought up? I have a running list of kind of where we're coming to consensus to, which we can discuss after trustee Stoa presents his seven options.
I kind of wanted one clarifying question because we talked about reducing the size of the community room potentially. And it, I don't see the square footage maybe on here. The community room is about the size of this room. Is that right? Fifteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred and sixty-six square feet.
Here's your microphone.
On the drawing, it shows sixteen hundred and sixty-six square feet. This room is just under eighteen hundred, I think.
So it's smaller than this room then?
A little bit.
Okay. So this isn't like, you know, like an excessive, you know, if you had like the blood drive or, you know, civic groups, if you're setting up tables, like the, this isn't like, I don't know that it's an excessive amount of space. So yeah, I think sometimes it's hard to visualize looking at it. And, um, the other thing I was thinking as chief was talking, there was, um, we went through like a, I don't know, maybe six months ago, like room by room on like, because it was like, oh, we do have like a lot of bathrooms and there's all these offices and like talked about like the shared spaces, like there isn't actually an office for every officer. They rotate through on shifts and like some people have dedicated offices and that's even with our workforce now. And so that was like a really helpful exercise to talk about like why things were positioned in certain areas. So that was a really helpful meeting if, you know, any of my colleagues wanted to go back and watch that or, you know, direct any members of the public, um, that have questions, the, you know, that was just running through my mind as I was listening to the talk here, that that was something that I thought was helpful.
And I'll just add, um, why I kind of said that I'm kind of abandoning some of those things was, um, a particular email that we had about, I asked about changing the room, the community room, but that would involve re-engineering the whole thing. So, yeah, that I've, and, and then I did watch the meeting about the bathrooms and all this stuff. So I'm, I'm aware. But yeah, that's, that's why I kind of have moved away from those structural things. So, yeah.
I, I just have one comment because it's a, it's a comment I get kind of quite often. We don't program this room. So we do have residents call and ask for the availability of this room. Unfortunately, because it is our only room, we don't, um, or very rare cases we do. So a lot of questions I get from seniors or other, is there a meeting space for people to get together? So I, if the community invests in this building, I think it would be helpful to have dollars to advertise that that space is available and make sure that we, we have the space that is not large, but it at least welcomes the community in instead of having a space and then being silent on it and then you're not going to get as much traffic.
I will say one thing, no slime, no library slime.
Not on purpose.
Okay. Just, you know, if I had to just like put my foot down, that, that would be it.
I'm no longer the president of the library board, otherwise I would outlaw slime.
He's back there. Okay. He's good with that. All right.
He's back there, okay, he's good with that, all right, good.
Hates slime.
I did have one other question on the community room. And so like this facility, it's like a key entry, so like even logistically, like having community members use it is difficult because you can, like, this would have the higher technology that you would have like a key fob or code. I'm not sure what the current technology is, but that you could program, it's only for certain hours. And, you know, it's more secure to give members of the public.
To answer that question, yes, it can be set up to be locked when it needs to be, open when it needs to be. It also is properly, not that this room is not properly laid out, but truly properly laid out for presentation purposes and/or just general meetings and things of that nature. So to help out with civic groups and so that they feel comfortable there also.
I know, I think I had made the comments midway through last year when I was learning about all of these things. But having a program statement for a community space at a police station is really important to do, to make sure that individuals, everyone in this community feels comfortable, you know, visiting that space. Any other comments? Let's move on to trustee Stoa. Do you want to go up front?
I do not, no. I'm certainly not going to be the only one to do that, because I feel like I'd be getting grilled. So let me stay, say from the outset that this is a process that has frustrated me for the last 18 months. I'm going to try to not be snarky, I'm going to try my best, but I apologize if it slips out. I want to say thank you to trustee Severson for bringing this workshop forward. I think it was a great idea. I thought it was a great idea in October when I proposed one of my own. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. Options for this, and let me also say from the beginning that I'm saying these are options, I'm not saying they're all good options. Okay. Option one, keep the original plan. I don't think we need to go over that anymore, I think everybody knows that. Option two, keep the original plan but go to referendum for direct voter input. I personally am uncomfortable being one of six to put $20 million onto the taxpayers. If we took it to referendum and they said yes, I would have no problem going forward with it. Option three, lease space in the village. There's a few buildings that are for lease that could act as satellite stations. Former Learning Ladder Building, Noodles Duncan Building's got some space, the new New Tech Building. I don't have a particular preference for any of those, it's just an idea. Option four, instead of lease, we would purchase available space. Like I said before, Learning Ladder is for sale or for lease, we could purchase that as a satellite station. New Tech as well. Option five, build a smaller, more compact building closer to MSB that frees up more space for future incremental expansion. This is the option that I've been trying to advocate for, for a while. And I also got asked how much square footage we should reduce it to. I'm not an expert, I don't know, I think that's kind of a trap question. It's hard for me to say. I've gone over in the past the rooms and places that I have issues with. I don't really care to rehash those tonight, but I think it could be reduced. Option six, look into purchasing, purchasing property that is not currently on the market. It's a little tricky because I don't really want to mention the ones that I'm thinking of because I would want to protect the village's interests in case we wanted to pursue those. And then option seven, build on the current land but for Public Works and Parks and Rec. Since there's a lot of green space there, it would make sense to me to build that for Parks and Rec area. Again, I'm not an expert, so I don't know where, with the configuration of a building or what it would need. Just throwing it out there. Anyway, those are my options. I look forward to you guys telling me why you don't like them.
All right, all the options are stuck on the wall now. Let's, we can just, should we just go down the line and start with option two? Let's talk about going to referendum. I, you know, we are elected officials and we do represent the community's best interests, and that's the decision that we need to make. Personal opinions on going to referendum, we can talk after the meeting if you want to hear my personal opinions on the challenges associated with that. We did have public information sessions that were attended by several members of the public. These plans have been presented over the last, at least, year at Community Night Out and Marketplace Days. They have been sitting in Village Hall during the election cycles. There's been a project page, like there's been every opportunity to, for public inputs on this project.
Has any of that public input been incorporated into the plan?
Yes, because it is.
That's not a snarky question, I just don't know.
It is a yellow design, and I don't like the yellow design, I would like the blue design. But the public that came to that meeting was very adamant that that was the color scheme that they wanted to go with. And I respect that decision.
I like the yellow better, personally.
I do. But I mean, can maybe staff weigh in first on referendum, what that means, what that looks like, is it feasible? And then we'll have trustees give their opinion aside from mine.
No, I agree with you, city, in the sense that the timing is critical, right? And referendum is, is going to be, we're not going to have anything for six months, five months. And that just adds to the delay in trying to keep things moving. So although I appreciate, you know, your, your point of wanting to get input, we're elected to make those decisions and, and, and address the needs of the community.
I do get that argument, absolutely. The only concern I have is this is the biggest project we've had come through, and that's what makes me uncomfortable with it. It's not, go ahead.
It's also the only project, so whatever comes first is going to be the biggest.
No, we vote on capital projects all the time.
We're talking about facilities, legacy projects.
Well, I'm talking about capital projects.
Cameron, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I think Pete kind of hit what I was going to say. There would have to be intensive communication efforts on, on what the facility is, what the spaces are for. When we engaged Miller the last time, or Mueller, whatever on it is, they actually recommended a much larger timeframe than what we did on the library. So like, I'm not even thinking even right, I mean, April right now of next year would be probably pushing my comfort zone on getting feedback on. I think you'd really be looking at November 26 to really allow the proper time on the engagement. You're probably looking at a budget of between $80,000 and $100,000. And again, that's, that's the board's decision, but that, that's what we're looking at from probably a high-level engagement cost.
I think the argument that, the, the time argument, I just, I don't really understand. Because I'm not, I don't think the argument to say to someone that lives in the village, "Sorry, we couldn't get your input on raising your taxes because we didn't have enough time" is a bad argument.
I think we, you can show the timeline that we have done six years of due diligence on this and re-scoped and cut it down, and we're $3 million under budget, and we can, that's what we, that's what you present to the community.
Yeah, I get that, but I've also been in politics a long time, and I know that nobody pays attention until they pay attention. And you talk to someone who has not paid attention to this point, and as far as they're concerned, this is the first time anybody's ever talked about it, so.
I guess on, on that point, that's where I find a referendum really challenging. Like, even bringing people that are spending a lot of time digging into, you know, the history of where we are and questions about, like, this is six years of history on how we got to where we are. How, how can we possibly, you know, communicate all of those details to members of the community to make an informed decision on referendum on an essential, necessary service? Like, it's what happens if they vote no, then we're, like, then what number are they comfortable with? We still have a problem with the police department, then we're like a year behind. And like, I think the community is overall in support of maintaining our essential safety services, and this is like the investment it takes. And, you know, I don't particularly, like, it is a lot of money, it's a huge investment. And, but at the same time, like, these are our needs, and we even cut back our needs to, you know, be a smaller timeframe that's more manageable financially. So like, how do we express like all of these things that we've looked at to make an educated voter when we're here to do that work on the voters', on the, you know, residents' behalf?
And I understand the, the argument that we've spent a lot of time on this, but it's getting hard for me to be sympathetic to the argument because I've been raising issues with this for almost 18 months now, and I've been largely ignored, so.
Can I just add on the, on the referendum? My viewpoint of it is this is a very different referendum than a library or a pool or things of that nature. Because people don't understand the value of our emergency services until they've had to use them, right? So if you're making the case that we need to build a police station, unless you've needed to call on the police, you may not understand the full need. The other piece is, I think about the amount of time that I spent with chief Gary, asking him questions like, "Why are there three holding cells?" and things like that. I got asked that question this afternoon, and so I was able to articulate an answer about why that's necessary. I think that becomes very different when we're talking about a police department, because there are very sensitive things that go on kind of behind the scenes, both for our officers' safety, but also victim and witnesses and different things that, it would get picked apart, and, and I don't necessarily want to see that happen. I think we've picked it apart enough. But again, I just, I put it in a different bucket, I guess, than other referendums in my mind.
I think this is also, this is not a new service. This is an existing, essential service that is, you know, mandated through ordinances and state statute, et cetera.
Just one other, other thought on a, from a challenge aspect on a, on a referendum on a facility is you'd want to make sure you're asking for, you don't want to ask for 20 and then, and then you go through this whole process, it's a year later, and it's, it comes in higher. And there's probably board discretion there since it's not necessarily a, I don't know about the binding or advisory aspect of it. So you, you may be asking for not to exceed 25 or 27 or something like that, and it could become challenging on a communications effort because everyone, you know, "I thought you were saying 20," and we're like, "We are, we're hoping." You know, and then it just gets, the, the pushback that can come from that can be tough.
All right, moving on from a ref, the referendum, go to option three, lease space in the village.
I think Cameron had something to say about that, so take it away, Cameron.
Yeah, this is where my frustration with the levy limits kind of also hits ahead. Sometimes the most cost-effective option is leasing space. However, lease, lease agreements aren't under the same adjustment as debt. So we'd basically be having to take a debt-like expenditure in our operating. And, and with levy limit laws, we're just, we wouldn't have the capacity, not even to bring on a $20,000 or $30,000 a year lease.
To be clear, Cameron, that, that would be a required referendum.
Yes, a lease would be a required to exceed the levy limit. It's definitely something that I voiced to our, our legislation that it's something that should be considered, because there's many instances where leasing sometimes helps stopgap solution to a long-term solution.
Cameron, as a follow-up to that, can I just ask you, one of the speakers said something about the village having to rent space? Like, that we're in a need for renting space if we don't make room in the MSB? Can you, that's new to me, so I just wanted to see what.
Sure, I thi, I think, I want to be careful because the board has to commit to resources. So if we're going to provide the same level of service to a growing population, if space isn't addressed, it should be expect that that service level declines because you have the same amount of resources. So that would be the assumption that there's just more garage capacity and things like that. And as we kind of turn to our other facilities, specifically, I mean, I think second after police, garage spaces by far the second thing that we, we should start addressing. And Kyla has some really creative solutions once we get past kind of this first hurdle.
Comments about leasing?
I will just say, I appreciate this idea because I actually, it's something that I investigated during the campaign. Actually, Renee and I went and toured the, the new, the, once we figured it was for sale, the new New Tech Building. And there, there are some possibilities there, but I don't think, I don't think it's, I mean, there is like a secured entrance where you can drive in into the building and is, but it would need work, it would need a lot of retrofitting. And I don't think that it would provide the office or like locker room type space that we would need. It, it definitely has garage space, you know, so like parks potentially, you know, with the number of vehicles and stuff, but I don't, as I've gone through it now and, and really realized it, I don't know that that's a good space for police, but potential other uses.
I think that is, and a lot of those spaces too, are at least spaces, kind of in the commercial corridor. And I, I don't think that, in my opinion, village services should be in the commercial areas and give the opportunity to others.
I was just going to add, the only thing I could see for like the new New Tech Building is potentially Parks and Rec, only from the perspective of having that programming space with kids walking, you know, back from GDS and Granite Ridge. Right, that, that makes a little bit of sense, but that's about it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I think that the New Tech Building is an interesting location, and this notion of whether the police department should be front and center or not, I think is, is debatable. I mean, there's, I certainly understand your point, it's our commercial district, but, you know, that building itself is too small for the police department, it's only 3,600 square feet. But I think being front and center, I mean, I would certainly entertain that. And again, that's not on the table here at all, but I just wanted to make a comment against what you said.
I should also clarify, this was not meant to move the entire police force over to that building. It's more of like a satellite station.
But I think the thing is, right, the satellite space, unless we move everything out, then Public Works doesn't have a solution, right?
And I think that we've also heard that satellite space for fire and EMS are, is, would be a priority in the next however many years, but satellite space for police isn't necessarily because they're out patrolling proactively throughout the community.
One, actively out in the community. Two, you see your satellite stations or your districts get set up due to the true growth in size of the community. I.e., a satellite station may be established to address a specific concern in a certain area that has been repetitive for long-term. Or you create a district because now you have your centralized department, and then you have this district that covers this portion of the community, this district and, like, City of Madison. They have five different districts. They're all cities within the city. The village is not at that point yet. Again, you'll still need a centralized before you start adding those type of facilities in.
All right, how about option four, purchase available space in the village? We, I guess we just kind of talked a little bit about that with the New Tech option. And I guess Learning Ladder is also listed on there. Yeah, I think this, the, you know, the proposed facility is, you know, moving police out. And then, you know, Kyla had demonstrated how Public Works and Parks benefits from that with this current option. Anyone else have any final thoughts on moving us around town?
I guess the, like, we already saw the implications of having a space that wasn't purpose-built and some of the security issues and, you know, sound issues and just like the very specific needs of police stations. So I think it would be costly to retrofit to fit those needs. So, you know, you may not end up really saving that much with all of the, you know, renovations you'd need to do in an existing space.
Oh, that's my own role. Option five, build a smaller, more compact building closer to MSB that frees up more space for future incremental expansion. So we've talked about this, you know, reconfiguring the site back when we did in the fall. We talked about moving it closer to the streets. The future expansions in 15 years might happen. The future expansions in fifteen years might happen. I'm coming from a place that building smaller and closer to MSB is going to be more expensive in the future.
Yeah, I guess when I saw this, Chris, I was thinking of what I proposed and basically using the same style construction and build bays to the west. You could add forty-four thousand square feet if you duplicated that, that building to the west. The real question is, do we really want to go down that path of a pre-engineered metal building? The inside finishes and the functionality would, we would make it the same. There's no question it has to be the same. The problem is it's going to take a delay. And Mike, I would argue on the life, I have a building, a pre-engineered metal building, it's fifty years old, there's nothing wrong with it. I mean, you gotta do the roof, you gotta do maintenance. So I, I would argue that the life of the asset isn't necessary, maybe it wouldn't last a hundred, but again, I think for the next fifty years. But that's what I think about when I saw that and I think when you look at the cost per square foot, we would save, even if we built a twenty-five thousand, five bays, it would probably save six plus million dollars in the total cost. But we've already spent a million-two-ish, right, on architectural and it's going to delay things. So, you know, I think all things considered, you're not going to get the same price, not going to be as nice. It's not going to be a showcase. Does it need to be? I don't know, it's, that, that's debatable, it's a personal perspective, but functionality is critical and non-negotiable.
Other comments on building?
There's a little slide presentation that someone's running through too. Thanks for whoever's doing that.
Did you do those drawings? Nice job, that, nice job.
I just, I want to say, you know, like, I know you feel like maybe your ideas aren't popular, but I appreciate that you have come up with them and that you spent time discerning and putting this in. That's what I was hoping for out of this workshop, was really just to throw everything on the table like this and so thank you for putting the time into it.
Thank you, Paula. I was going to suggest something similar, Chris, that you came up with a lot of ideas. And I too, I have to admit, I, I was a little reticent about the size of the building until I did some more investigating myself and went to visit with Chief Gary and took a look around and, and really soaked up the needs and so that made much more sense to me.
All right. What about purchasing property not currently on the market?
It's kind of a hard one to discuss if we're not going to talk about particular properties.
And then building on the current land, but for Public Works and Parks and Rec. And I think, in my opinion, we've done all of these studies and the police have, again, consistently emerged as the most pressing need and that's what you take care of first. And then we do have a plan now that staff, or we've heard that staff have internally been working on how to adjust the other departments and how it fits within a much longer-term solution.
To be honest, that idea came to me as I was falling asleep, so I just threw it on there.
Chris, it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, from the standpoint that it's this, the MSB is the kind of potential twenty-ish year growth footprint for the police department. I think one of the, the challenges would be, you would likely still need to do a twenty, probably twenty thousand plus square foot reno in there. And Mike, you can maybe just touch base on the, I, I think we're looking at even rentals for a police station still being in that four hundred to five hundred dollar per square foot range. So you would be, you know, looking at still a pretty sizable improvement to MSB and then, you know, the, a Public Works, Parks and Rec building would be less cost, but now you're looking at multiple projects and you're probably pushing, if, you know, likely north of the total cost of this project, but we, we did look into that too.
Yeah, I'll just elaborate that I think we were looking at maybe about three hundred to three fifty a square foot for renovation like that. Again, we would have to do an assessment on the building, you know, you know, it's not really, wasn't originally quite built for that kind of thing structurally. You'd have to look at the mechanical, you'd have to look at the plumbing. So there's a lot of things that are involved, but it would be about three hundred, three fifty, just taking a guess without understanding really what's the makeup right now.
From an IT perspective, I just want to comment on the type of build that's over there. There presents, you know, and one officer touched on it, some challenges when you're talking about getting through the base structures. We, we make, we certainly make it work with, with different solutions over there, but it does make a challenge. What isn't highlighted in this plan is we'd actually move the core IT center of village operations to the police station. So currently, currently we, we have a small-town IT cabinet. It is time that we figure out a long-term solution to make sure that that data is secure, safe and in a location that, that protects that information. And that is being proposed in the police station as one of the solutions to that, to, that holds all the village's IT resources.
May add one more thing. So if we were to do a, the police station in the MSB building, we would have to move them out and would have to relocate them during construction, so you have to take those costs into consideration as well.
But that's, that's the case where you build for Park and Rec. If we add it on for the police station, they would move out and, right, so, so this scenario really doesn't work because of that issue you just brought up.
Correct. If you were to renovate the MSB for the police, but the scenario where you would add on would be a different story. But then again, you know, as you mentioned, we would have to, you know, there's a certain flow that goes with the police station, not only inside, but outside as well. So that'd need to be studied.
All right. So that concludes the memo portion of tonight's meeting. I would invite trustees to give maybe their closing remarks if they have any. Otherwise, I think we, you know, I've heard some things that I'll summarize at the very end and propose kind of a path kind of moving forward.
I can start. You know, I, I certainly appreciate the need. I, I met with Chief Gary and certainly the input we got here tonight from, from the department. It's really important that, that we come up with a solution and we move forward. And I think adding, building is really the option and, you know, my only challenge is, is the cost. So the value engineering effort to me, from, from my experience, is a really important phase that, that I'd like to see done. You know, certainly I, I think it's a little too late to, to be looking at a pre-engineering, a pre-engineered metal building addition. I know for a fact it would save millions of dollars, but we've already spent a million dollar and it's going to take time, which is going to add the inflationary impact on construction. So certainly I think some form of moving forward with the design at this point is, is critical.
Okay. Well, thank you to everybody who spoke and especially the officers. And I don't remember your name, is it Brian? I think, yeah, you brought up some really great points that I hadn't considered, so I'm, that was very valuable, so I appreciate that. I think for me, you know, I think having to build is, is obvious. I understand your point about pre-engineered buildings, but I will tell you that if you suggested that for fire and EMS, I would have a visceral reaction. So the same goes for police. Again, I, I believe the three-legged stool, they're all equally important and so I, that, for me, that's off the table, sorry. But again, so I think, I think a few things. I would like to shave a little bit of the cost off. Why? Cost savings, room for other projects that potentially we have coming. So again, for me, solar, if we could peel solar off and then even, even look at some of those allowances, that would be lovely. If it comes in under bid, that's even better. But I think one of the things we should probably discuss is what is our top end, right? So if, if we peel off solar and some allowances and, you know, we estimate the project to be nineteen, what is the top end for us as a board to say, "Uh, if for some reason the bids come in higher?" So that, that would be part of this conversation I'd like to have, like, is, is the top end twenty-five million, is the top end, you know, whatever? But I think for me, I guess my inclination is to move ahead, try to get a couple of costs down and see what happens with the bids.
Yeah, I think to your point, we would have a conversation if bids came back over what we had approved in our financial management plan. And I think that's maybe where we have the conversation then.
Okay. So, you know, while I've been sitting at this table trying to figure out our facility needs because we, they had been identified when we formed our department, that this was, you know, a facility that was only going to last a certain amount of time and then pair that with growth and, you know, the closure of TID5, I mean, all of these things that we've been discussing over the last six years, you know, I was prepared to, you know, make the decision and continue to move forward on this and I hope that this exercise has helped my colleagues, you know, understand more about the project, the history of the project, the steps we've gone through, the needs and, you know, while I've had, you know, many years to follow this, I hope that this has been helpful to catch all of you up. So of course I, I would like to see us go out to bid and move forward with this project. So that's where, where I'm at now.
So, I mean, everybody here is in agreement that we need more space for the police department. There's no denying that. I just, I struggle with the size of, it's not even necessarily the size of the building, it's the size of the building all at once that I struggle with. We got an email from Cameron the other day saying that due to the police department project, the amount we can spend on other capital projects is going to be reduced from, by a third. Normally we get six million, this is going to go down to four million and half of that's going to be fleets and streets. So that's going to be two million less dollars we can spend every year on intersection improvements, things like that. So that worries me. I think it's, it's, paradoxically, I think it's too big in the short term and too small in the long term because we're basing the, the size on future growth, which has always been underestimated. So I'm worried that in twenty, twenty-five years, it's going to be too small and we're going to need to build a new building anyway. And that's why I would like to do something smaller and grow with the village because I'd like to be able to not have to build a new building in twenty years. Once the debt for this comes off, we just got to build a new building right away, that worries me. I have a lot of things, but it's all stuff I've said before, so that's, I guess, that's all I got. If anything comes, else comes up, I'll say something else.
Well, I too appreciate everybody's input and the thought process behind this and although some of you may have had years to do this, some of us have, like you said, Paula, only a couple of months. And it was not only this meeting that helped my decision, it's getting out and, and meeting with the departments individually and, and visiting and, and seeing what's out there. So, and I also share concern, what you just stated, Chris, about the budgetary concerns that Cameron sent out as well. So I feel like we have a lot of really important, heavy decisions to make. I think we all really agree on the same thing and this reflects past spending by the village board and that's a whole nother discussion as we move forward with this. But I, I think in discussing all of our options, moving forward is, is definitely the best option and I do want to say, I, I don't think there's enough bathrooms.
It's going to be like the ongoing joke for the village, something about bathrooms. Cameron, do you want to, just for everyone, do you want to summarize, maybe we've referenced your comments from last, was it last week? Is today Monday?
Yeah, I mean, what you're talking about is the prioritization guideline document. So when, when, when that was first put into place, four to six million dollars was put in place as an annual average spending for all projects that, that happened. So when you have large legacy, legacy projects, starting last year, we shifted the total average from six million down to four million to make sure that we were still within our fiscal means. Just highlighting that our growth, apparently I've been talking too much, our growth will help with that number as it increases over time, as well as, that does not count for any grants or anything else that we would apply for. So there are avenues to make our dollar go further, but yes, you know. And then to kind of further point, always having kind of that pullback too for future investments into facilities.
Sydney, before you, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, because I glanced at the prioritization stuff and I mean, looking forward, 2027, there's at least three point four million dollars in projects, 2028, two point five, 2029, two point three, 2030, eight point seven, 2031, three point seven, 2032, one million, 2033, ten point one, and 2034, three point eight. I just, I, those are going to get pushed off and pushed off and pushed off and they're, most of them are things we, I think desperately need and just worries me that they're going to get pushed off and potentially never paid for or built or whatever.
Before, can I just, two things before you wrap up? I, I didn't specify why I wanted to remove solar. So the two big sustainability features in the design are solar and geothermal. And the reason I'm recommending just removing solar and not both is because, two reasons. One, if you pull out geothermal, you have to replace it with an HVAC system, so there's not as much cost savings there. Plus geothermal has, I think, a better payback. And solar panels are something that could be done at a later time to go to that concern versus having to be part of the new construction. Geothermal has to be part of the new construction. And then just one other thing I wanted to mention about your comments about future needs being too small. I share that concern, but I, I'm in the unique position that, I was on the Sun Prairie City Council back in two thousand and three when they went through a ton of growth and where we were at the place of planning Station Two in Sun Prairie. So the main police station is downtown, we were planning for Station Two to be combined with fire and EMS. So it could be very well that if we're looking at a fire EMS station in 2030, 31, that we tie in having some squads or something out in that location as well. I don't think we're going to grow to the size of Sun Prairie. But again, you know, those two stations are placed for strategic reasons and to go with the future growth. I just wanted to add those two things.
I just wanted to echo that, as we've heard many times tonight, if we don't do the solar now, it will get more expensive in the future. Solar is, of this entire project, solar is like the least of my worries, so.
It's a half million dollars, Chris, and the return on investment is not great. So if it gets more expensive, it's going to make less sense to do. But I, but I would say, you know, Chris, I agree with you in the sense that we've got a lot of projects and you look at that prioritization list, I don't know whether it was twenty-eight or thirty-two projects, and these things are just going to be prioritized and kicked down the road. And that, that's why, you know, looking at the options, the only option that's going to save us material amounts of money, and you don't like it, is basically building on something that meets the needs, but has a different construction. But, but again, I, I, as I think about what you said, Chris, I mean, that's what drives my concern with, with committing twenty million dollars, is there's a lot of projects, there's a lot of needs and they're all going to get delayed.
And I could just speak a little bit to the, the growth and certainly welcome any of you, if you'd want to meet with Erin and I, to see how the proverbial sausage is made as far as the, us working with the comp plan, with, meeting with developers on a weekly basis to have, you know, pretty good data as to what's, what's coming, what's, what's somewhat likely to be approved and then timing when they would even move forward. And, and so we, we have minimums and maximum ranges that we project out. I mean, I, we do it every year and, and adjust. In some ways, we're never wrong because we get a state estimate and then we just, if we're off by a few hundred, we, we adjust, so we just, we don't ignore it for, for years. But when we look at targets of each census, we're looking at a minimum and maximum from the standpoint of a ninety percent assurance on both end. So we're ninety percent sure, for instance, in 2040, that we will not be less than fourteen thousand population in 2040. We also are ninety percent sure we won't be seventeen, more than seventeen thousand. And we can say it with pretty good confidence with the, the comp plan and the markets and things like that. So, and then to the, the growth of the department, I, I know the general planning is we could need an addition in ten to fifteen years. I know Chief is hoping it's, you know, even with this growth, in all likelihood, and look at how difficult it is to move facility projects forward, it's probably closer to twenty. And then after those additions are made... And then after those additions are made, we're good for another 15 to 20 after that. So I mean, we've, you know, this kind of, this site should last the village for 40 to 50 years, all, all likelihood, and potentially further if we would happen to look at other, other expansion to the, to the north at Hamburg site, but.
Because you said that, I'm going to live to 90 years old and I'm going to come back and check in.
Again, that is what the, the plan from the onset was trying to project that future and trying to set the village in the best position possible for the long term and the long haul that was going to have the best economical return for you. So I did have a memo prepared for this evening. I am not going to torture you with it, other than I'll send it to you via email so that you all have it related to capsulating what I was going to speak to.
And last remark I'll make on, on this is, and staff probably knows what I'm going to say next, but we're not trying to be right, we're trying to get it right with, with these numbers. So I've been, I'm not hoping I hit this target, so I'm, I'm right. You know, we're just trying to, we're just trying to be proactive in outlining every single development that's approved. And, and even that is not real easy to know how fast a developer may implement a project that's approved. You know, sometimes, you know, they move at a different pace than we're expecting, but usually when one isn't moving as fast, someone else is filling that, filling that gap because it's, we're generally talking about free market, we're not incentivizing this development on the residential side, so.
Thanks. My concluding remarks, I guess, that we are, you know, that one of the fastest growing villages in the state and we haven't, you know, historically been investing in facilities. I think this is a six-year data-driven process. We've, you know, identified the need, we know where we need to go. And while, you know, staff and the agency continue to be very proactive in telling us their needs and, and working and revising numbers and giving us the information, we as a board can't be paralyzed in making a decision and, and moving forward. You know, this is all kind of come to a head where we need to start moving forward. And so my notes from tonight are that I think the consensus is that we, there is a significant space need and we can't compromise on function and we should go forward with the bidding process. However, we should remove the solar option. I think that that's, as much as I love solar, I worked on the school district solar project, and I could tell you all the great things about it. I do, I'll, I agree with the board that that is a, a significant cost savings that could come off of it. And I think that we can evaluate those allowances, but that there's significant risk with not moving forward and, and delaying this project going to bid, moving forward. Then, then there's also a future agenda item from Heidi's proposal, so look at that Hamburg land and then kind of engage with some discussion there.
It's not going to cost you anything to get pricing on the solar because it's already part of what, so while we might end up cutting it, I don't think it hurts having that information because you, you have to accept that alternative. So I guess if the board doesn't mind, it would be really nice to at least get a ballpark of what that, that amount would be in actual dollars.
But I think that, that is a cost-saving measure that the board would then just not go with, based on what I'm hearing tonight.
I mean, everybody would want solar, Cameron, absolutely 110%, but we want to take care of the roads. I mean, we have so many other things that we need to do. And when you go through that prioritization that you'd sent out, we got a big problem. I mean, this is a problem, we need to solve it. But, you know, we have to, like, take the things that aren't absolutely must haves and they're coming out, they have to come out.
Yep, don't, don't disagree at all. Just, I, I always like getting things for free, so at least getting those dollar amounts and evaluating it is helpful, since we paid for that to already be studied.
Yeah, I think it's fine getting the number, but we're not going to go with it.
Okay. So going back to my initial memo, giving, you know, do we need a formal motion to kind of move forward? I think, I feel like we've done, you know, our due diligence and demonstrated the community with the purpose of this meeting. We've thrown it all against the wall and we have kind of our solution moving forward. I'd like to make this a little bit formal and that we move forward with it. And we kind of also hit that, that ceiling where, when it comes back, if it's over, what is in the financial management plan, then we do have another, this maybe not a complete workshop, but we do have a big discussion about that. Larry, can we?
No, I'd just like to ask one question to Mike. So we talked about doing a value engineering. I mean, the, the allowances, that's one little small piece of what VE is all about, right? So, you know, you said several weeks, I don't know how important it is, I think it's important before we go out to bid because we're bidding the design, we're bidding some of the features. And that's where value engineering comes into play, is not after you get the bids. That's taking a look at allowances, totally, those are selections after, but it's critical that we deal with this upfront.
So I guess the question would be is, what are you looking for, for value engineering? What is the dollar amount that we're looking to get to?
You know, that's an iterative thing, right? So I, I guess time is critical, right? Dollars are critical, functionality is critical. So when you look at the design as it is, your recommendation in terms of, say we wanted to try to drive out 5% by really looking at some elements of the design, not necessarily functionality, and coming up with some sort of trade-offs that would feed into the bid.
Yeah, and, and we can generate a list of what may come out on there and have kind of like an Aller Cart menu at that. When you get to a certain level, you're talking about saving a thousand dollars here and there. So the things that we look for are the big things, and I'm not sure what those are at this moment. We'll have to sit down and figure out what those potential things are.
So is your recommendation, go, go forward with the bid and then we'll manage through adjusting scope? I mean, it just seems a little cart before the horse in relation to what I've done in the past.
Yeah, no, it's true. I, I think we can look at material changes. And again, without doing square footage, it's the, it's what you're looking to get out, how much you're looking to get out. If you're looking to get out $50,000, we could go through exercises and do the due diligence, but some of those may have changes where we have to change the drawings. So, you know, again, I can't give you a flat-out answer right now. There is a value engineering option we can look at. And again, it's scouring through the drawings to see what has big impact, cost-wise, low impact on getting these drawings out.
And the other, oh, sorry, Pete, I didn't mean that.
Actually, you said a million dollars before and then we reduced the solar, so we're looking at cutting out a half million dollars of the project. But if we're talking about a redesign or re-scope, that's that like a $350,000 redesign, are we, like, I mean, at what point? We're already below our financial management plan, like, level of 3 million.
We still have, Chris, points out. I mean, there's, just because we're within budget doesn't mean we shouldn't be asking the questions and trying to get the best value for the Cottage Grove residence, right? That's where I'm at. And, and again, I, I'm not an advocate of spending $350,000 to redesign and redo the building, right? I'm talking about going in and taking a look at some of the things that are critical to design. I mean, I think, you know, we've got that natural lighting. I, I don't know, I don't think that based on the design that that's an easy thing to take out, but there's money there. There's the design when you walk in, there's, it really looks great and I love it.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, when you walk in, what is that logo cost on the ceiling of that main vestibule? It's those sort of features, those sorts of design that doesn't impact the functionality, but it drives the bottom line. And if they're big-ticket items, I'd like to understand what they are. And something like that, I don't think has to be taken out for it goes to bid. But there are other things that potentially would.
Sure, yeah, I mean, we can, we can do that. I'm not going to tell you to go to bid on this and do it that process, that's not my job to tell you that. What I can tell you is that it, it'll take a little time, but we can come up with some of those lists that you're looking at. And again, some of those may not be big-ticket items, but they're, you know, they could be $6,000 for the emblem, don't know. But, so it's kind of up to you to understand or figure out what you want to change. But the ramifications, because we are at this point, is that we'll have to change the drawings, so that's time and money as well. I mean, it's money to take a look at these in the first place, you know, for us as well too.
Yeah, and I think we don't want to spend a lot of time.
Right.
And we certainly don't want to spend a lot of money, right? You're, you're throwing good money after bad, trying to drive out costs, but you're spending money to, to try to do that. We're talking about an exercise that's very quickly that could identify the areas that we could potentially drive out meaningful dollars, right?
Yeah, and that'll be determination what meaningful is, yes, yes. But we could, we could do that.
And, and this is, this is more of a hope and we'll do our best, but there's a reasonable contingency, can you, can you speak to that, Mike? And then, and then I'll speak to how we'll manage that.
Contingency for design or for construction?
The, the construction.
Yeah, yeah. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's, I think there's $860,000 in for contingency. So that's construction contingency that basically protects the village when it goes out to bid. So, you know, this happens to be a green site, you never know what's under there, but there's things that happen that are unforeseen, changes, no one's perfect. That's what the contingency is for. So our goal, it's on every project, is to keep that contingency low. So when that contingency is low and say there's $250,000 worth of what happens over there, the other 500,000 goes back to village. It's not, it's not spent, it's not gone, but it's budgeted in there to protect the village from anything happening.
And we, and we didn't hire a, a construction manager, so as far as, at least till we get to a certain threshold, if it, if it starts getting low to the point where, and certainly we'll be keeping the board up to date, but if it gets to a threshold, we're, we're nervous that a couple more changes could, you know, cause cost pressures. Well before that, we'd be coming to you guys to, we, we might have to slow work down to address if it gets down that low. Up until that point, and we, you know, again, then there's a construction manage, you could hire a construction man, construction manager, we looked into that. I mean, it could, could range anywhere from 200 to 300,000 dollars to have someone manage a project. We're, we're foregoing that in this project. We'll kind of do it by a staff committee of Chief, Kyla is a professional engineer, and myself, so we'll kind of handle it as a three-staff committee approach on those change orders and then keep you guys up to date. And if it, if it would come, you know, again, cost pressure-wise, or, or there's some real notable change orders, we'll come back to the board with those. But certainly, as Mike mentioned, we hope it's not needed.
I just want, can I say one thing before Mike goes? I just want to say thanks for all your work. I'm not in love with the project, but I know you've put in a lot of work and you came here a bunch and I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Can we, can we have a formal motion, Larry? Is that okay?
To discuss and consider, absolutely. And it, the status of the project right now is, all the approvals are already in place to take this to bid. It was really just a question of whether we needed to stop or do something different. So if there's a difference in direction or if you just wanted to validate the, the place in the path we're on right now, that either of them are fine.
Yeah, I think this is a validation of, you know, moving forward. Does someone want to make the motion? Otherwise, I, well. Chris, you want to make the motion?
I'd make a motion.
Go ahead, no.
I'd make a motion that we continue the police station project bid process with the, ensuring the solar is an alternate, so we can decide, we have the number, but decide that. Value engineering options to explore, consider. I want to make sure I capture your ideas and the allowances to be evaluated.
I'm not quite sure I followed that, but we're talking about Mike, Mike taking a look and providing a, 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 a kind of a perspective on what a value engineering exercise would look like before we actually go out to formal bid, right? Sorry.
Do we need a second before we continue that or we?
You can second.
I'll, I'll second. Can you read the motion back as you have it? I'm sorry.
And then we'll define value engineering as.
And timeline.
To move forward with the bid process with removing, or with having the solar as an alternate and value engineering options to be considered and allowances evaluated.
If you want additional definition with, if you want additional definition with the value engineering, then we can, I would be open to a friendly modification to my.
No, I think they're fine. I just want, you know, clarity on what we're talking about. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, that Angberg goes forward and, and spends four weeks and however many hours of engineering to come back to something. I think it's more, before we go to bid, we would have to have an understanding from you, Mike, is there something here, is there not? I think there is, but that's really the question, right?
Yes, yeah. And just to clarify, you know, there are a few things that we have to do to get this out to bid. So we needed some front-end work and coordination. So there are some, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's before we get these out to bid, so we're probably two, three weeks out to move forward. But if we have a particular marching order to look at VE items, does that require another board meeting that we're going to have? I'm just trying to kind of plan for how this is going and when it's going.
Pete, do you want to see?
Yeah, no, I don't need to see it. I think Chief needs to see it. And Chief, you know, obviously we're trusting you that you're going to do what needs to be done for the village, but we know that this is the beginning of a design and, and every time you, you design or build a building, you get into it and there's a million questions, there's a million options, and there's lots of potential paths to take that have different costs. And I guess that's obviously something that I'd like to see done. I don't, we don't need to go through each line item, I think it's between you and Chief.
So is this more of a, kind of like an internal staff sit-down to make sure that they have cut as much as they possibly can?
We will vet it again.
But, okay.
Sounds like Trustee Murphy's motion was perfect for that.
As long, yes, if we've defined value engineering and then, but continuing along the timeline as necessary to move forward with the bidding process so that we hit all of the next milestones.
And we'll have another meeting between then, if he's saying two to three weeks, right? Like.
July 7th is our next village board meeting.
Yeah, so we should have, I mean.
So if there is something that arises that we need to take action on, please bring it to the next board meeting.
Yeah.
So there is a motion and a second and no need to revise?
Correct.
All right. Any more discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Obstain? Motion carries. Number six.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.